Yes.
We're good, all right.
Good evening, I'll call the order on this June 28th meeting of the Federal Town Plan and Zoning Commission. And I am sitting for Chairman. We will be late. Who we have sitting for is Ms. Harigan as a helper. Commissioner Kit, Commissioner Kit, you're in the office. So let's begin with the first order of business, which is the meeting minutes of June 14th. Twenty-two, twenty-two, do I have a motion? Moved to approve by Commissioner Francis and second about Commissioner Harris. Any comments?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Francis.
None for me.
I review the minutes, they seem to be in order, so do we have? Do we have a vote on the approval of the minute? All in favor, I'm just gonna say aye.
Aye. Aye.
It's our pre- hearing. The next item is our public hearing, zoning regulation amendment. Application of Fifteen Uncle Road LLC. Demand section 12.3 of the zoning regulations in the Center of Design Business District. The proposed new section 12.329 includes carried multifamily residential use with a housing opportunity for four thousand persons. This is continued from June 14th, 2022. And along with this application for the regulation amendment, we have a zoning compliance application also of Fifteen Uncle Road LLC. Pretending to the construction of a stadium unit residential building under eight dash thirty G of the Connecticut State Act. Commissioner Kit, were you able to view the video of?
I was here.
The last video.
I was here.
So you're all set. I'd just like to note for members of the public. That the applicant will continue with presentation tonight from June 14th. And that the hearing will not close tonight, there will be another, there will be another hearing. Because we do anticipate that the applicant will require time to complete his presentation. And there will be public comment, and after the public comment, the applicant will have an opportunity to rebut in response. So I do also want to remind members of the public that we receive and read, all us commissioners. Read comments that are submitted by email to the TPZ. And those comments are considered along with any testimony that you may want to give in person. Should we get into public comment tonight, I wanted to let people know that if you want to come in person. You will come up to the table where the applicant's presenting, you'll have the microphone, you'll be able to speak here live. And for those of you who are participating by webex, you should have given that that you want wish to speak. And you'll have an opportunity to do so by webex. With that, unless there's anything else, I think we continue with the applicant's presentation, Attorney Smith.
Yes, sir. Sir, Mr. Chairman or Acting Chairman, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Chris Smith of Alterm Pearson on behalf of the owner applicant Fifteen Uncle Road LLC. Just for the record, what? The visuals that the commission will be seeing through that we have. Sorry, it's like a.
Yeah.
Just have the port of mind closer to the.
All right, are we ready to go back on the record? Can you hear? Okay.
Yeah.
So we're recording us?
Yeah.
All right, so we've taken a recess after some additional technical difficulties that if they're resolved to the best of our ability. We can be heard by those participating by webex, but as I understand, we still can't be seen. At any time, Ms. Harigan, you find that we can't be heard, just please let us know. I also wanted to announce that Chairman Harigan has arrived. Commissioner Kit, thank you for your brief service, you're relieved. And we're ready to go back on with the applicant's continuing presentation, if you're ready to proceed. And thank you for your courtesy with the technical difficulties.
Hopefully it works.
I still don't have power to the computers. There's power, it's stripped, it's not having a charger. Yeah.
Depending on that computer being heard.
It's on air.
Yeah.
This is broke.
This broke. Okay.
And we had that issue with the.
Still don't have a charging, we may need another laptop before we're done here.
Okay, Attorney Smith, why don't we get started, we'll do this. For the record, Chris Smith of Alterm Pearson on behalf of the owner applicant Fifteen Uncle Road LLC. Just quickly introducing everybody who's here this evening, on behalf of the owner applicant Dr. Lee Forrest. With us this evening, and Dr. Forrest was with us at the initial hearing two weeks ago on June 14th. Also, we have Jay Edwards Associates LLC, Jason Edwards and Larry Edwards. Who will be making presentation shortly. Our architect, John Gads of Gads Associates is here, now Mr. Gads has to. Will have to leave after his presentation for an hearing up in Shelton, so. If he, if there's any questions for him when he's done, we'll just, if it's okay with the commission. Interrupt whatever we're doing so that you can ask questions of Mr. Gads. And then we have Neil Olinsky, our traffic engineer of Best Elar. And remotely also with us is Joseph Versteg, who's our co-compliance. Life safety specialist from fire safety issues. And we'll be hearing from Mr. Versteg at the end of our presentation. As the, oh, just a quick procedural item with Commissioner Ford, and I know I spoke to. A town planner went about this, and I think it's been communicated to Commissioner Ward that Ford, excuse me, there was a. Commissioner Ford made reference to having his office nearby the subject property. And it's my understanding that that will no longer be the case in the immediate future. I just was raising that issue in the sense of being in close proximity to the subject property. That might be an issue, but I'll turn it over to you if you wanted to respond to that.
Not at this time.
And it's my understanding you're gonna be relocating your office in the immediate future elsewhere.
It's true.
Having said that, and clearing that, so Mr. Commissioner Ford. Is that going to be? Do you, I don't wanna, I just, for the record. Whether you feel that you can act objectively on this application right now?
Listen to all the evidence. Build online, I could with any other application. If you're making your request or recuse myself, make the request.
Well, if your, if your office is gonna remain in close proximity to the subject property, then I would request that you refuse yourself.
And I'm not gonna.
All right, thank you. At the June 14th hearing, we were almost done with our presentation, the commission had raised a number of questions for us. And you had requested some additional information. We did generate that, we have incorporated some of that information into the plans and have made revisions. And what we thought would probably be a good approach for this evening's format with the permission of Chair and the commission. Would be to provide a presentation, review of the additional material that we have submitted in response to the comments. Concerning the first part of our presentation, address that now first, and then we would go to our traffic engineer, which Neil was up. In the batting page, ready to come in, batting circle, and then finish with Joe Versteg. So with permission of the Chair, what we'll do is, we'll start with. Jason Edwards and John Gads, who will review some of the modifications that we've made to the building. To address and just review some of the information such as the test pits that were done, form larger issues, and there was. Some issues concerning road displacement that had come up. And we'd like to, we can address those first, and then the commission had asked for some additional information concerning. Our applications with the WPCA, and we did submit some material concerning that. I could just very briefly provide you with an overview of what we submitted, and then we can hear from Larry Edwards, who did a summary. A report for the commission, I think that that'll all be brief, but we just wanted to be responsive to the commission. And after that, we'll go to Mr. Olinsky for the traffic presentation, followed by Mr. Versteg.
Okay, yeah, just going back, I know you don't need to be beat a dead horse, but. Even though it's gonna be a moot point with Commissioner Ford, even if his office was still there, I'm not sure it would have risen to the level of recusal. We don't need to litigate it because he, as he said, he's going to be moving anyways. Everybody on the commission knows about the need to be impartial, it is a personal decision. And I'm confident that everybody continues hearing the evidence and deciding that they have made the right decisions for recusal or not. So I just want to put that on the record since it was discussed quickly, but feel free to proceed as you said.
And understood, Mr. Chairman, and I did, I just have an.
No, I understand.
I represent a client, but I did inform.
I don't expect.
Mr. Went of it so that we wasn't.
No, we appreciate that.
Keep it above board, and I appreciate your comments and Commissioner Ford's as well. Thank you.
Can I just point of order, I can't hear what people are saying because there's no microphone again. Just speak up and. Thank you.
Oh, that'll help especially. All right, much better?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, permission of the Chair.
Yes.
The presentation over to Jason Edwards, and I do know that we have some slides to some of the plans to make progress.
Good evening, I'm Jason Edwards, JAM Associates LLC engineers and surveyors, 227 Stephanie Road.
Anything else that needs to be added to the record, or is this all stuff that's in the record?
This is all material on the record, Mr. Chairman, I believe everything. Yeah, yeah.
Is it a PowerPoint or is it just?
There's a PowerPoint in the folder, top folder. There's, yeah, that one there. So, one of the main things that we did add to the presentation and the submitted, some renderings in the building. Mr. Gads will speak about that. Go to the next. Next slide, please. Um, yeah, it's gonna be, gotta go to the next section. So one of the concerns that was raised at the last hearing was the depth of the groundwater. Apparently, there's some of the neighboring buildings have issues with groundwater, or not even neighboring, but surrounding area buildings, I don't know exactly where they are. So, so we had done test pits back in when we first started on this project, I think it was around 2019. On the property, those results are, they're in this slideshow. In the, if you go to the next divider section. Through all this stuff, there's another, another slide that's got the. Like part two, yeah, there we are, yeah. So, the soil test results are in here, we will get to them, but we, we had found groundwater at. One hole we had no ground, one of the other hole we added around nine and a half, ten feet. So, we, we used that for our design basis. We also, after the last hearing, I did a little bit more research. And discovered a study that was done for the town by Malone and McBroom. 2017, I believe, in which they. They did soil borings all throughout this area. I was, it was a study of the drainage system in the, I think it was community infrastructure improvement type study. But they found results that were consistent with ours, they added an actual boring in our property. And they indicated a groundwater depth of 10 feet. There's a series of, I think, 12 or 10 borings throughout the entire area. To the south of the train station, and there's even a couple to the north. The only area in which they had groundwater depth that was. Significantly less than 10 feet, I don't recall, it may have been around eight feet, but the other ones were all well above, in the range of 10 feet. There was one that was around three feet, but that was on the other side of the railroad tracks. So we're fairly comfortable, very comfortable with our. Our initial assessment of the depth of the groundwater. So, after the last meeting, we understood that there was concerns of displacement of the groundwater with the basement of the new structure. To try to alleviate those concerns and. And improve the plan, Mr. Gads, the architect, redesigned the building. In a way that allows it to. Basement floor to lift up approximately two feet from where we added it forward, which puts it about one foot above where we identified groundwater. To do that, he provides a ramp now that ramps up into the building and then another one that ramps down. This, one gives us more separation to the groundwater, which, you know, eliminates any potential displacement of the groundwater. And it also adds a reverse pitch from the road into the basement entrance so that. Any surface water on the street would be diverted back into the street, it won't go into the basement, which improves any potential flooding conditions for the building. That really is the extent of what we changed here. I do have the soil test results and some maps showing all the soil, the part of the presentation. Want to show those, sure, just, you gotta click through, probably, there's. Stop you when you get there. Oh, that one. So that's the, this is from the Malone and McBroom study that was, you know. Contracted by the town, and the red dots you can kind of see on here are all the soil borings that were taken. And the big red arrow, these are sites, you'll see there's one right center on it, and as you go to the next slide. Our soil test results are on the right, you know, you'll see that we, we found groundwater at nine and a half feet in one hole. And then the water McBroom's boring log is on the left side, and in purple, it's difficult to read from here, but. It also indicates a depth of 10 feet to groundwater. Believe that's about all that I had, I think I'll turn it over to Mr. Gads, because he wants to explain more on what he did.
Are those new slides in here as well?
Yes, his new slides are in there.
Members of the commission, members of the public, my name is John Gads, I'm a principal at the architecture firm, Chris Associates, and also president of those companies. At our last meeting, I think it was Commissioner Ford that basically triggered in me, and, you know, I. The ability to rethink. Through the whole concept of the, of the parking garage. One thing that is unique about this site is that Uncle Road is higher than Sanford. Street. And looking at it, I realized that, given a lot of the comments that were made concerning groundwater and also. Issues of flooding and so forth, that I went back and I rethought of the. Parking garages, and I was able to redesign in a way that, you know, base it to have the building at the same height. But I didn't raise basement and first floor. Levels of the garage. By two feet, which brought internally out of the groundwater. So the plans that we have now have been reintroduced. Right as Jason Edwards indicated, two factors, one is removes. The total structure out of the groundwater. And secondly, because of raising the basement level. It allows, it allowed us to redesign the ramp into the basement in a way that the pitch of the, of the ramp is. Lower. And at the same time allowed us to create a reverse pitch. So that the, any flooding that's on the street is prevents, will be prevented from flowing down the ramp. I think that the plan, the plans that have been now introduced, revised plans. Mitigates the issues that had been discussed in the last meeting. At the last meeting, we also did not have the renderings of the building ready, and I think if we can get those up. Basically, we just had it. Basically, this here presents, the rendering present, the building's. Location in conjunction with the adjoining. Buildings, especially along the Donley's Walk. The first rendering shows Donley's Walk along with the, I believe it's the entrance to the railroad station. And the one on Sanford Street, it shows is adjacent to Archie Moore and the other structure. So the, this here will depict the structure. As it would be built. Have any questions, I'll be more glad to answer.
Commissioner Levy.
Do you have a rendering showing the building looking north from the Sacred Arts University?
Well, that one is a little difficult because you have buildings, you know, adjacent to it, so it sort of blocks it. I mean, this here, these here were more appropriate because you, and it goes back to hearings that we had within the initial submission. Where, I don't know, some of the commissioners recalled that there was a structure, the structure was depicted, but. Nothing adjacent to the structure was shown, and in fact, at those meetings or hearings. It was impressed on me that I should show something that would represent how buildings would look. Adjacent to the Donkey Clock. So, to answer your question, though, I did not, we could do it, but we didn't.
So you'll be able to get one?
Sir?
You'll be able to do a rendering?
We'll look into that.
That's not a commitment.
No, I mean, if the commission believes that that's appropriate, then who pulls?
I think it is, I'm sure, thank you.
Commissioner Broad.
I was looking through my notes just now, are you talking about a rendering that would show the community theater side of the building?
I believe that's what's been requested.
Yeah, because by my calculation, it would tower over it by probably about 40 feet, maybe more.
About 40 feet, but it would be much higher.
Okay, 40 feet, okay, I have some questions about the test pits. Did I see a slide, first of all, are all these slides?
If I can't, because I know Mr. Gads has somewhere to go after this.
Okay.
Is that true?
Yes.
Okay, can we? Because I hear the test is Mr. I forget, so, Edwards. If we can just add anything with Mr. Gads to give him the courtesy of leaving.
Oh, I thought he was talking about drainage also now.
I'm prepared to just. I'm with the architecture.
About the ramp. Or was some concern involved, the old project from two years ago and this project about the slope of the ramp? Does the change, so you're not, you have revised the plans to change the ramp. To raise the bottom of the basement so it's higher above groundwater, right? So does that change the slope to make it less or more, and how does that affect travel and pedestrians?
Well, it's basically, that's two things, and there's three aspects to this. One is that Sanford actually pitches towards the post-ramp. So, the driveway on the north side is at elevation of 13.0 or something like that. And then the driveway on the right side is at 12 points something. So that's one issue, the other issue by raising the basement elevation by two feet, it changed everything. I mean, it changed the pitch of the ramp and allowed for this reverse pitch. For, you know, instead of when you get up, there's a reverse pitch, meaning that. The, I believe it's 10 feet away from the driveway, or the building driveway entrance. It's out by at least three or four inches higher than the sidewalk, which is basically nine inches higher than the street.
You're gonna have to explain to me what reverse pitch is, I don't know what that means.
Well, basically, you know, it's, you know, you're going up and then you're going down, it's, you know. So as you're exiting, your pitch is, you know, you're going in upward direction and then you're driving downward toward the road. So it's a slight hump in the driveway to allow, so the water doesn't, you know, come into the, to the garage.
From the street?
From the street.
Surface water?
Yeah, in case of flooding.
Okay, so a lot of the concern, and this is probably more for the engineer, but a lot of concern was not so much. Water keeping out of the building, but water going everywhere else outside the building in flood conditions, but.
Commissioner, I think it was two told, one was the issue of the groundwater, how to deal with it. Because there was concern about not just keeping it, you know, from coming into the garage, but also displacement.
Right.
And then the other issue is, okay, how do you prevent, you know, waters that's running down Sanford into the post-ramp, surface water from the rains. From going down the, you know, the ramp.
What is, do you know the slope of the ramp as it approaches the sidewalk, so it goes up to get out of the basement and then it goes. There's also a ground level, there are two parking areas, one below grade and one at grade.
Right.
So we're only talking about the one below grade, right?
That's correct.
So that's been raised, so there's less of a slope going up, is the slope coming down the same as it was before?
No, it's less as well.
And do you know what the slope is, it like?
And maybe it has a little, but I think it's like 13.8%.
Because in the old plans from two years ago, the code review notes, which I don't think were done this time around, and they don't have to be done, but. They were mentioning 15% seemed steep and we should make some kind of accommodation for safety, I don't know, 13.9 is steep also.
Well, this happened, no, this is standard, you know, it's not, but this here means all requirements. Of the, of the standards.
So it's 13.9% the slope coming down?
Again, I, you know, I can't see it from here, but.
It's in the plans, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
You can confirm.
I couldn't see it on.
Commissioner Bradman.
Mr. Gads, do you have any architectural features of the proposed building? That are intended to evoke or consistent with historic architectural features that are seen elsewhere.
Well, yeah, if you'd like, I mean, one of the things that we went through, you know, and again. Reddy's stuff, what up? The. You know, not, yeah, there you go, so, I mean, there, you know, the initial plans. The initial rendering was just one facade with, you know, and the comments that were made, not just by the commission, but also members of the public, was that it was. A massive, you know, brick structure. Even though the height may have been slightly less, I think it was one story less. But the, but, you know, the criticism was the massiveness of, you know, of the. Of the building, and, you know, I went through various redesigns, I met once with. Mr. Joe Wentz and his staff and others, and, you know, they added some comments to it, and then, you know, we had. The attempt for the tax change amendments that the commission was looking into. And, you know, in the redesign of the building, I took all that into consideration, breaking up the facade. You know, setting some, if you look at the, the design, there's some balconies in between, so the structure is broken up. Various, you know, ediments over the windows, you know, there's certain features. There was also, you know, it was a recommendation that, and unfortunately, these remedies don't show it, but the 2D do. And that would create, you know, storefront features facing the Donley's Walk, you know, so there, there was a number of features that have been. That were introduced. Just, and again, it was just part of that whole process of going from one, you know, form to another, and the whole, you know, meetings and so forth. And comments that were introduced, and this was the, what, you know, I wound up, you know, finalizing.
The specific elements that you're referring to are balconies, pediments, and a storefront view?
Yeah, storefronts on Donnelley's Walk, redesign of the storefronts facing Anqua. You know, just certain features that, you know, I think the start.
Would there be any other buildings in the area that were as tall?
Then I could not ask.
You're not aware of?
I didn't, I mean, you know, the, I would say that from the design aspects of it, you know, I can't voice the or make a comment on. I only can tell you is I introduce features that I felt were appropriate for the location.
But you're not not aware of any other buildings in the area that would be as tall?
I am not.
You consider the community theater to be a historic structure?
Yes.
Consider the central design business district to be a historical architectural area?
I couldn't say that based on ones adjacent to the proposed building, those I abandoned. Those are historic. I don't really see the features to it.
Do you know of other multiple dwellings in the central design business district that don't have a mixed use retail component?
I'm not.
But you don't have any specific awareness of them? Thank you.
Commissioner Braun.
Some follow up question. Um, so this building will contain, nothing's changed off the quantity of the of the units, right? It will have sixteen studios, four one bedrooms and forty three two bedrooms. For a total of sixty three units, which is one hundred and six bedrooms. Are there, are any of the units, it was hard for me to tell from looking at the plans on my small laptop, but are any of the units, do they have dens in there? Because dens could sometimes be converted into a bedroom and then you could have actually more people living there.
I believe some do include it in the terrible Donnelley plans.
Okay. And there are sixty parking spaces on site. And the assumption, is this, is the assumption on this the same as it is for the regulation amendment being proposed? That ten percent of the parking that you assume will be needed will be found somewhere else in the community within a radius of five hundred feet of this building? Is that the assumption here?
Up to ten percent, sorry, up to ten percent. And I think.
So over and above the sixty, you're gonna find. So you're assuming then that if you're going along with what your regulation proposal says, whatever you're providing on site can be ten percent less than you think is needed because that could be found in a radius of five hundred feet around the site. Is that what the plan is for this building or just for your text amendment being proposed for the regulations?
For the text amendment, I'd have to look at the distance requirement. I'm not sure if that's.
Might have been four hundred. It was either four or five.
I can, I don't like to see enough. So the text, Commissioner Braun, the text amendment in its session, both section twelve, three, twelve point three, point twenty nine, point five, so section B, it's at page four, provides for one space for dwelling unit. However, when public on street and other parking is available within five hundred feet of the subject property, a maximum of ten percent of the required parking spaces may be provided offsite. So one per unit would be sixty three, so up to ten percent or six point three, six could be provided offsite.
I think it's following that because I did a calculation and with sixty parking spaces for sixty three units, it's around ninety five. You're short about five percent. That's what my calculation says in terms of providing one per unit. And also, it's only about point five six spaces for the hundred and six bedrooms. It would be even less if you had dens made. I'm considering a bedroom might be a person that lives there that might have a car. So I'm a little bit, I'm always concerned about parking inadequacy and they're gonna park on the roads and then that'll create another, other, you know, types of problems. But I guess the assumption is here, just like the underpinning for the text amendment being proposed is that ten percent of the people will be able to find parking somewhere in a nearby radius of five hundred feet of the property on a permanent basis.
Right. And I, and I think for the record, Chris Smith, I think from what I understand, the table of approvals in the past, seventy eight Anqua Place has twenty six units, twenty seven spaces. From what I understand, twenty six appear on the on the plans, but it's roughly one, one parking space per unit. I think there's forty six bedrooms there according to this chart. And similarly, sixteen seventy five post road has one per unit. There's thirteen units in fourteen twenty seven, fourteen forty three, King's Highway at twenty four units and there were twenty four parking spaces on site provided. So just for some comparison, there were, were at least three prior applications that were approved with the one to one.
I think that's all I have for you right now. Thank you.
Commissioner Bradman.
Mr. Getz, I just wanted to make sure that I asked you all the questions that I have for you before you have to go. So you had discussed at the last hearing a groundwater dewatering plan for construction. And you acknowledged that groundwater will need to be dewatered from the secondary construction, right?
Well, I mean, prior to last, the last meeting, that was correct. I think that now, you know, that whole program will change. I, the way that I redesigned this, it's still the same concept of monolithic pour, puddings and slab. However, the bottom of the puddings basically will be at, you know, what I'll have medium, it will be right there. So there may be minimal groundwater, you know, that will have to be dealt with, but it's, it's not the same as if you're, you're building into the groundwater.
The groundwater dewatering plan that was submitted to us, you know, from the June fourteenth hearing, that is no longer going to be.
I'm not suggesting that. I'm suggesting that if needed, that can still be implemented in the same fashion. I just don't see it as the same type of problem that we were referring to last, the last meeting.
If I can, Mr. Vice Chairman, for Mr. Getz, the whole idea about raising the basement level two feet was to eliminate any groundwater displacement, correct?
That's correct.
And then if indeed there is an issue with groundwater during construction and the plan that has been submitted would be the plan that would be implemented if indeed that were to occur during construction.
That's correct.
Yeah, so just wanted, I think, just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Is there any plan for dewatering or groundwater after construction once the building is complete?
There's a program that's been that I think that, you know, and I think Harry Edwards addressed that, but if you recall, during the last meeting, Edwards indicated that there would be a tank that would be installed for the purpose of dealing with ice melting off the cars and so forth. So that program will still be, from what we discussed, will still be implemented. The only difference is that now it'll just be a small sum into a tank that'll be installed, you know, into one of the storage rooms instead of underground. And again, that's to prevent displacement, groundwater. Still like the same, in the same way, but I don't, based on the new or the redesign, I don't foresee having any groundwater issues. The finished floor of the garage is going to be between twelve and eighteen inches above the groundwater.
The only sun pump that's proposed now is going to be a sun pump for the purpose of pumping storm water or, excuse me, pumping ice melts runoff from cars in the garage. They'll have an oil and water separator, like, but there's no sun pump or other program for dewatering of groundwater after construction.
That's correct. It's not eliminated.
Correct. Are there any, is there any underslab drainage proposed?
No.
Is there any footing drains proposed?
No.
Commissioner Harrison.
Thank you. I think this might be for you. I want to grab it before you have to head out. Now, just bear with me here, just wanna reference my notes. Are you familiar with the standards from the National Fire Protection Association as it relates to having fire personnel at buildings? And as I understand it, as the size escalates in the building, the more personnel, when you finish, more personnel requires for a call and within a certain amount of time.
And, no, Mr. first, oh, I was just gonna say, Mr. Christine can respond to any of the fire code issues here, who's the person?
Okay, very good. I was okay.
Sorry, just wanted, I wanted to wait for your thanks.
The only thing I also just want to add, you know, this, this building will be fully sprinkled. Number one, with current NFT thirteen, which is, you know, commercial commercial type of sprinkler system, that's number one. And number two, because of the height, it's also going to be designed to be constructed, not combustible.
Yeah, no, I have concern, I mean, a few months ago, we almost approved an A thirty G that had a lot of public safety issues. And it was brought to our attention at the last minute. But can you, do we, does have you talked with the fire marshal? Do we have enough adequate crews to meet the protocol? That's.
Yeah, that's somebody else's.
Maybe one of your team or whoever the appropriate person may be.
They'll be doing, they'll be doing a presentation for you.
All right, thank you.
Great question.
Commissioner Francis.
Water during construction? Two days. Sewer system?
No. No, any, I don't foresee any issues with water based on the redesign. But the way that the, the way that I programmed this all out and you have in the drawing format, and that is that it will be temporary dry wells that will be relocated as the progress plays. And those will be set up so that in case, you know, if there's a major storm and work is underway, you know, that they'll go into this temporary dry well, which will, you know, seep the water out. It may just, you know, circulate, but, you know, that, that's pretty common. We do that in many locations throughout, you know, the inner cities where you have no, you know, as an example, the city of Bridgeport prohibits now any storm water, what, doesn't matter what type, to go into the sewer system because it's, it's the combination sewers. Everything winds up at the, so when we're, and we're on the construction in downtown Bridgeport, with the building on Commerce and Main Street. We have the same issues. We can't, you know, any dewatering can't go into the storm system because it winds up in the sewer stream plant. And that's prohibited. So we have to do similar situations that's been proposed, that is just to, you know, keep on pumping it into temporary dry wells until we're bottom of the ground. So it's, it's no different.
Town engineer was concerned. Discharging to the sanitary sewer.
Yeah, no, that's, again, I'm not familiar with the sewer system and but I, you know, I do know that in a case like in Bridgeport, it's combination. So everything winds up.
Structure?
There will be no water whatsoever discharged into any of the municipal systems.
Commissioner Braun.
The, I'm looking at some notes from our town engineering department from April. Can I assume that your revised plans addressed all those notes? For example, I'll just give you a couple of examples. They're concerned that during construction, there could be groundwater that could end up discharged into the system and it would end up in South Pine Creek, which cannot accept any more water.
Yeah, the redesign interests.
And that's in a discharge plan that we now have in your revised plans?
Right.
Okay. Everything on this presentation we have now, right?
You do.
They also complained about a plan that showed a four story building, but now it's a six story. So that's been corrected.
Well, you know, again, this, you know, that was a modification to the application.
Okay. They also, the town engineer said they were concerned that the foundation system immediately adjacent to town of Fairfield public right of way, the putting widths were not shown on the east side of the foundation, which directly abutted the street line, et cetera. How will those rights of ways be supported during construction? Has that been addressed in your revised plans in a way that we could?
Commissioner Braun, there's, there is also staged construction plans that I submitted that show sheet filing and, you know, adjacent to the public ways such as the sidewalks.
Your new plan, your new revision?
Right. Well, this was submitted the last.
That was, that was part of the original, that was in response to, to that comment.
Oh, so you already responded to a comment with our original presentation?
Right.
Okay. And a plan for sidewalk protection. Do you have, is your phasing plan in here also?
Yes, there is.
So it seems as though some of the, I guess the test pit person is not you, but I would like to have a lot of people.
Well, I'd like to have a chance to have a little.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Getz. How high is the pitch from the highest point to where the street would be or the sidewalk would be?
To be honest with you, without looking at the plans, I, you know, I would.
You just throw them up just so I could get a sense of it myself, because I, I'm trying to get.
No, he's talking the overall height of the place and it doesn't matter, right?
Yeah, I mean.
Keep in mind, the, you know, the way that the streets are, Anqua is sort of funny because it goes from, I believe, elevation thirteen point five to eighteen from one point to the other. And so, but yet, on Sanford Place, it's, you know, thirteen, I think thirteen point five to fourteen. So the difference is not that great. But again, we're dealing with a six, you know, story building.
What is the?
Well, it wouldn't be that, that's just the foundation.
That's not gonna show me the pitch?
Yeah, that's just showing you the ramp pitch and the elevation being raised on the basement. But you have to go to the elevations themselves to show the height of the building. That's right there. So if you can just.
Mr. Wentz, do you know offhand?
Well, did I understand your?
Highest point of the?
The highest point of the ramp?
That's what I'm kind of looking for.
The ramp?
No, not the top of the building, the ramp. I'm talking.
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry. Disunderstood. It's only, now it's only like six and a half feet.
Okay, so you're going from like the sidewalk of the street?
Six and a half feet, no.
No, you're going up first though, right?
Well, but you're only going up three inches.
That's what I wanted to know.
That's what he was asking.
Yeah.
And then you're going there.
Okay, so three inches though is enough, I suspect, to, if there is water. The exit and the entrance is what, Anqua or Sanford?
Sanford.
Okay.
And keep in mind that the gutter on the street, so, you know, it's actually six inches lower than the sidewalk. You know, because you have that, you have the ramp and then you've got another three, so you're actually nine inches above the.
I know we've got a video that was introduced to the evidence. We had a downpour like yesterday, there's water, whatever it was. Did you get a chance to review it to see?
Yes, I did.
Okay. That kind of rain and, I won't say flood, but there's a lot of water. Do you think the pitch is enough to keep the water out?
Yes, it is. I mean, look, I don't want to criticize the person that took the video, but the person actually showed their feet. And, you know, the water was, you know, maybe, you know, the foot wasn't buried in water.
No, but it's.
Maybe you had an inch or two of water.
But it's not, it wasn't exactly a hundred year storm yesterday.
No.
Once a month storm.
Yeah, there's two, two things. One is that in discussions with Dr. Lee Forrest and, you know, the issues on his side to, you know, history of flooding, he wasn't able to present that. That's number one. Number two, if you look at this, you know, the street is always, the gutter on the street is always lower than the sidewalk by six inches. I mean, that's, that's standard engineering. So in this particular case, when I evaluated it, you know, I found that having a three percent pitch, reverse pitch was adequate to keep the water out, which meant that we were nine inches above the gutter of the road.
So for three inch pitch, again, from the sidewalk up to the highest point of the driveway, you don't have any, how, you don't have any issues bottoming out cars?
No, not for three inches.
And was this, I assume the information, this new pitch was shared with your traffic engineer for sightline determinations?
Yeah, well, again, none of that changed.
Well, yeah, and we'll go through that. That's fine. As you're going down the ramp, did the change in pitch affect the, I assume did, the clearance going down?
Yeah, it's just basically you have, you know, the pitch, I mean, the pitch on the ramp is now two, you know, the ramp raised by two feet.
Was there an issue with clearance previously?
No. As a matter of fact, if you look at it, we have.
Seven feet or something like that?
I know we have, you know, I showed it on the plan on the section. There's an eight foot height on it.
Okay, and did that material, I mean, the one, you shift. Okay, and did that material, I mean, the one, you shifted it a bit, so it had to affect it by a bit, but?
Yeah, it just increased the height by slightly.
Or decreased the clearance?
And increase, increase the clearance.
Increase the clearance?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because basically you're raising the upper floor away from the ramp.
Yeah, but I would have thought you would have, by moving the pitch up and into the building, had a clearance.
The ramp stayed, the ramp stayed the same. All that happens is the ramp, if you're looking at a hinge.
One up two feet. Okay, no, you're right. One up two feet.
No, and look, I, you know, there I do this for a living and I design buildings, you know, I do one a week. And on these issues that I take, like what happened with Commissioner Ford last in the last hearing where I heard him really saying, I tried it out. And I went back and I tried to create solutions to the issues that were raised. So, and this is what is, you know, what I did here.
So we're just, with the addition to the, with the pitch, it just, it adds something now to the part, to the sightline and coming in and out. I'm struck in better sense.
Yeah, I think you're fine. It's, it's a better.
If I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Getz, following up on a couple of questions from Chairman. You did view the video that was submitted yesterday concerning storm.
Yes, I did.
Yesterday, this was. And.
Sorry.
I apologize. No disrespect to anyone pretending to son of a.
They'll go back up that way. Well, sorry. So you did view that video, correct?
Yes, I did.
And Mr. Getz, with the design of the, your building as designed, would that water have gone into the garage?
Not that.
Thank you. Just wanted to be clear.
No, that's fine. It's just, you know, the idea of also if it's, you know, one month storm, which we had is, you know, how, how to look with the hundred years or the one.
The only thing that Chairman, the only thing I would add to, you know, this whole discussion is the fact that there is the added feature whereby there is a tank being provided. You know, that will pick up, you know, the most likely, I don't think it'll levy to be used or pumped out. Because the, the amount of, you know, snow and ice that falls off the cars in the winter, you know. But if there was ever an incident, that, you know.
No, I remember saying you're, you're doing it watertight. So you're not expecting water in or coming up from the bottom or anything like that. If water got in, either for whatever reason, it was going to be sub-pumped out to a tanker and taken off-site. But as we discussed, at no point will water, if it ever gets into the basement, be put into this.
That's correct. There's no way. We'll design.
No, that's okay.
The municipal, the municipal system.
Yeah, thank you.
Just to clarify, Mr. Getz, if you're raising the bottom of the basement two feet as the building overall going to be taller?
It stays the same height.
So where's the two feet coming out of?
Coming out of the first floor. If you look at the original plans, the first floor garage, you had a set of stairs that launch into the elevator lobby. Those stairs are going to eliminate it. So now you're walking directly into the elevator lobby. So basically it was taken, and again, it has to do with the grade on Aqua. So, you know, the on Aqua, I believe the, you know, I have to look at our plans, but you had, I believe it was fifteen foot, you know, height on the Aqua side, where you had something like seventeen on the Sanford side. So all I did is just, you know, raise this so that, you know, that sort of evened out.
Thank you.
Commissioner Braun.
Where, where's the trash receptacle for this building? How's that being handled?
You have two, if you look at the garage plan, first floor garage plan, you have two elements. One is the trash chute, the trash compactor, and the other is two trash containers. That's it, right there, trash container on the elevator.
They're in the basement. I mean, they're in the parking garage?
Are they in the parking garage?
Yeah, if you look right, I don't know. Mr. Braun, if you're looking to the left, upper right, you have upper left corner. There's, there's a space there for actual trash containers. And then if you go over by the elevator on the right side, lower right side, there's a trash chute and a trash compactor. So there's two being provided here.
So.
You look at the big.
Trash go, how do you get, I don't understand. You have a chute that goes down to the right side and how to, what's that side for then?
That's where recyclables stand. You know, that had been introduced for the, what's now the amenities, but it was going to be commercial. So that'll still, the space is there in case it's needed for recyclables. But again, this is the typical, you know, system that I introduce into all of our apartment buildings. And that is that each floor has the ability to bring their recyclables and trash into a room, put it into the chutes and the chutes come down into that room on the lower right side, adjacent to the elevator.
And I have a question about the driveways. The engineers mentioned, the town engineer mentioned that they're only twenty feet wide instead of twenty-four feet wide, which is the norm for two-way traffic. So there's two driveways. Is there a schematic showing both driveways and how they're situated?
It's right there.
Could you? Show that I? There's a ramp up and a ramp down?
Because they're both on ramp, but they're both off of Sanford. One is on the north side, one is on the south side. The standards, and again, I don't want to disagree with the city engineer, but the standards, as we've been following them, are the twenty-foot driveways are adequate for double for double travel. Twenty-four foot is used when we're dealing with backing out from parking space for maneuvering. So here you've got twenty-four foot for maneuvering, you have twenty foot for travel, for travels.
So you have, which, which is one that goes to the lower level versus the?
The one on the bottom of the screen is to the lower level.
And that's more towards the post road versus the train?
Right. And then the north side is adjacent to the doming block.
So each of them is twenty feet wide and has two-way traffic?
That's correct.
And a thirteen point nine percent grade, or at least one of them goes down into the side, down towards the road. And what's, how much distance is between the two driveways?
I believe it's thirty feet.
And you can go right or left when you exit? There's no limitation?
That's correct.
Commissioner Lee.
Thank you. Mr. Getz, on the first floor, there's about three thousand to thirty-five hundred square feet, which is dedicated for amenities. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's a leasing office, yoga and so forth, correct?
Yeah, the, what I try to do is still keep that design depicting the storefront lot. So it was either we eliminated the space or we converted it into amenities.
But it's not residential, correct?
It's amenities for the residential use.
Okay. Nor is there an allocation of thirty percent comparable space for affordable housing? Or roughly nine hundred additional square feet of affordable housing relative to that.
Well, you know, that's not how, I mean, I refer it to attorney. But I don't believe that that's how the statute.
And as I'm talking about the statute, I'm talking about your design. Is there any allocation of a comparable, affordable area?
I'm sorry.
Affordable housing area, roughly nine hundred feet, which would be roughly thirty percent of the three thousand, thirty-five hundred on the first floor.
Those are not leasable spaces. They're, those are common elements, common elements for everybody.
But I just, I wanted to make sure we understood the question and respond.
Well, my question is, eight thirty G is for residential purposes, correct? And these areas are not residential. They're not ideally in a zone, they would be commercial, but apparently you're not prepared to determine whether or not a mixed use is appropriate. But my question is, have you allocated a comparable amount of space for affordable housing as you have the amenities?
The, I, I think with the amenities, the ideas as in many residential communities that are, have an eight thirty G component, have an affordable component, they do generally, if, if you're in a suburban type area, they very often have outdoor amenities that are just shared equally amongst all the residents. There's, there's no offset required. It's just by the, by the bedrooms. I mean, by the unit types.
But my question is basically square footage and zone. It's no offset, correct?
None required, but there isn't any, I don't believe. I don't know, what would we designate an area just for affordable?
Or you might have one more unit or another nine square feet of affordable.
But it's, it's, it's bedrooms to bedroom. It's, it's units to units and that's the statute. I'm just not sure.
My point is simply, let's say you made half the building common amenities. Would you not feel that some of that, that you could have comparable, affordable units comparable to half the building?
No, if you had fifty units, if you had, I'm just going to use fifty per both, fifty units and then fifty percent of the building was amenities, as long as thirty percent of those fifty units complied with the eight thirty G requirements and, and then the balance, if it was available for all the residents, you're not discriminating against anybody. It's just become elements for everybody.
Now, this building also is roughly three stories higher than any surrounding buildings.
That's correct.
Right. I mean, as an architect, you are concerned about the impact of a building on the surrounding community, correct?
Well, again, it's, you know, I focused on what I thought was appropriate based on what I was tasked to do.
Okay. And what was your task?
My task was to create a building for this, the chat here, for the purpose of an A thirty G application.
Was there any discussion as to the scope of that task in terms of the size, whether it should be five stories, four stories, six stories?
Well, again, that I would have to refer to the client.
Yeah, but you're the architect, right?
Well, I still have to follow instructions.
And you're always, you indicated you do a building a week and you're always looking for solutions, right?
Well, that's correct.
Okay. And my question is, what solutions do you have to the maintain the harmony of the community in the downtown area when you're putting a six-story building, which is three stories higher, anything else around?
Well, you know, Commissioner, I, you know, again, we all have our own ways of looking at things, but most downtowns of any municipality starts out with small buildings and then winds up with higher buildings. And that's throughout. You know, a lot of, some of the approvals that this commission has been granting in a lot of locations, they don't look, they, they have been higher than three-story buildings. And even in the downtown area. So this is not the first one in the downtown area this commission has approved higher than three stories. But again, I'm not, I'm not here to, you know, all I can tell you is this, I was asked, I came up with a design that I felt was appropriate for the location. I'm not going to, you know, argue with you that the validity of why it should be six stories versus three stories.
As an architect, do you feel that it's a, that it fits in with the surrounding community?
I believe it does. That's my opinion.
And others disagree, right?
No, that's why I'm saying, I mean, you know, this is, you know, and again, you're, you're here as the judge. All I can tell you is that, when I believe that given the issues that were raised, I attempted to deal with them. As far as the design, I came up with what I believe was an appropriate design for the location.
From an aesthetic standpoint, do you think a four-story building would look better?
Of course.
Thank you.
You know, but it's not what we have here. And again, we attempted to go that route.
Commissioner Bravon.
Uh, just one follow-up, Mr. Getz. So you, your client previously proposed a four-story building.
That's correct.
And it had an affordable component.
I, I don't believe so.
Right. But it was economically feasible for your client?
Yes, you know, again, I, I believe, and again, you'd have to ask my client. But I believe that we spent over two years attempting to come up with a program that this commission could sign on to.
And that prior proposal, like four stories and it's smaller, smaller number of units was economically feasible.
That's correct. Without, without you proposing.
Otherwise you wouldn't promote it. Thank you.
Commissioner Harrison.
Yeah, thank you. You withdrew the application. There was, there was no decision rendered. I just want to be clear to people here. That application was what's wrong. I mean, there was no decision rendered.
I don't think anybody said that the decision was rendered. I think that the, the last, the last hearing, there was, you know, mentioned the fact that, that Dr. Forrest did proceed to provide a smaller building with smaller number or less number of units. But, and it was submitted under the, you know, tax change amendments. And at the time, the commission decided that they wanted to look at the overall district to see if they could come up with a, with a regulation that would allow for the building to be built. But unfortunately, you know, we never got there and Dr. Forrest decided to proceed in a different direction.
Thank you.
Well, let's, we don't need to re-litigate the previous things. I think A, the history, public hearings speak for themselves. They're out there. I'm not sure that this commission agrees with every characterization that's been made about that. The efforts made with respect to the regulate, our attempts for previous regulation amendments. Well, we don't need to re-litigate that. I'm just putting it out there that I'm not sure I entirely agree with the characterizations that with this application and subsequent efforts that were made thereafter. I assume the answer to the question is yes, but all the amenities will be, the amenities are available to all residents, correct?
Yes.
I mean, yeah, it's anybody.
For the record, yes.
Because it was mentioned.
Yes, absolutely.
Any other questions, Mr. Getz?
Commissioner Braun.
Are the pedestrian ingress and egress, where are the access points? I see some on Aqua Street. And also, is there one right in the middle on the Sanford Street?
You have two, two elevators we have proposed. One on Sanford, one on Aqua. Basically two access points to the building. You know, both streets.
Is one on Sanford, for the record, Chris Smith, in between the two, two ramps that are shut?
That's correct.
And how about the one on?
I forget it.
If you just slide over and then you can just identify as if it's in between the exercise room and the leasing office?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Oh, and I see there are entrances to the exercise room from the street. Right? Is that a doorway there? And the other thing that says a thousand square feet of yoga? Those are, who's can get in there from the street or from inside the building?
That is correct.
But it's not for the public. That's only for people that live there.
No, that's just a depiction of a storefront.
A storefront? Looked like a storefront, but not open to the, not obviously.
That's correct. That's why you have the entrance doors from the elevator lobby.
But I see doors in all three of the rooms.
Right.
Those are doors to the outside, right?
That's correct.
So people that live there can go in from the outside?
Yeah, to keep up. That's where I started.
So. I think this was.
Right.
Commissioner Braun.
Yeah, strictly for the residents.
Commissioner Francis.
Previous drawings show the entrance rooms and exit rooms, seventeen feet to eighteen feet. I don't know, twenty.
Believe that they were ever seventeen or eighteen, Commissioner. They were always, you know, twenty foot. They continued to be twenty foot.
There's, if I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, there's the, the there's a dimension, I think of twenty feet, but it doesn't take into account, I think, some of the structural columns that, that maybe that are showing projecting into the twenty feet.
Mr. Getz.
The, again, when we do the final drawings, we'll have twenty foot clearance. We do the construction drawings, but we will have twenty foot clearance.
What's our meeting time in July, late July? What's our meeting day in late July?
Uh, the twenty-sixth.
I'll be here.
That's, that's, so Mr. Getz will be here on the, available on the twenty-sixth. They continue meeting. I just wanted to, no, and the bump with you on that. If you have further questions. Everybody's very silent with shades.
Any final questions from Mr. Getz? As you said, he'll be available later.
All right, did you have any final notes?
One of the comments. One of the comments was, as people came down, it seemed they to make a nighty to return into their apartment space that they could not and you'd have to give up apartment spaces.
So then this will work. Especially now with the, that ramped redesign, there's less of a pitch and less of a ramp. Actually, the ramp actually shrank. Whereas before the whole thing, she was, you know, was rambling out a dozen. Cause again, we removed two feet from the required, what happened? So it was, uh, you know, just better the whole, you know, the whole access move.
Commissioner Bradman.
I should just ask one clarifying question, um, so in the previous application, I do notice in, in the record, there were, uh, there was a proposal for, uh, for housing opportunity units, uh, at eighty percent, uh, uh, needed immediate income for the area, uh, to one-bedroom units and to two-bedroom units. Is that fresh recollection?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, that was, I think that was a voluntary proposal.
Oh, that was the prior.
Yeah. That word there, I saw, but I was thinking, um, any further questions, Commissioner Broad?
Just one quick question, is there a mailroom or anything like that?
Yeah, there is, it's, it's not, just to the left of the main entrance on Aqua. To look at it, uh, there's, um, it's right at the elevator lobby.
It's on the box now.
Yeah, it's in those boxes on. Thank you.
We're offset, Mr. Gibbs, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Jason Edwards, just to clarify with the stormwater system and design relative to the town engineer's comments in the town's regulations, if you can just, and is, does the system as designed comply with the, uh, with the town's regulations?
Uh, Jason Edwards, for the record, uh, yeah, the, the system was designed in accordance with, uh, the stormwater guidelines or regulations for the town of Fairfield. It was reviewed by the city engineer Laura Foley, uh, and she found no problems with it.
So was it compliance?
Being compliant, in terms of what storm we've got. I believe it's a hundred percent.
Hey, I just wanted to make sure that we had, uh, in it, it's just something, maybe, the necessary.
Um, with the, Commissioner's added questions from Mr. Edwards on the, uh, uh, test pits or borings or things like, yeah, Commissioner Broad.
So could, for some reason, I can't find that, I know it got sent to us. Can you show us, um, the test pit drawing so we can see where they, with the? You know, which ones, did I just?
The point of those don't show up on the figure screen, it only shows up on, lasers don't work on LED. Um, so it's over here, this is the test boring that was done on fame fifteen on Kow, Road, which is
Where the arrow is.
Where the arrow, the big red arrow is here.
What test pit?
There, there was, we did, we did two test pits, uh, Jay and Associates conducted those in twenty nineteen. This is a soil boring that confirms our results that was done by Malone McBroom independently for the town, uh, in twenty, I believe twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen.
What was the depth of that test pit?
That has, uh, the results are on another page, but I, they had, they had groundwater tits in purple, it's at ten feet.
Uh, cause you mentioned one of them was nine point five and one that was near the train tracks was three feet?
Yeah, if you want to go back to the other, uh.
Well, so, there, there's only one, in other words, there, you did one test pit on this whole site?
We did two, and Malone McBroom did one soil boring.
Which, I'm sorry, say that again?
We, my office did two test pits, deep test pits with a, there's a difference between a soil boring that's done with a drill and it goes down and takes a sort of core sample, and they, they analyze that, they measure the depth of groundwater, they analyze the soil conditions. What we did, my office did, Jay and Associates, was we went out with an excavator, uh, you know, backhoe, and dug down ten feet and then did an analysis of soils that way, uh, that's our standard practice for, for, uh, testing for, for, uh, stormwater systems or septic systems. Um.
But my law to make room.
So where was the other?
For ten feet.
Yeah, they, Malone McBroom did a boring that went down below ten feet, uh, they had groundwater at ten feet, but they went, they can go deeper down boring, that's what their purpose was.
Um.
So they conducted those borings, you, you know, all these bullseye little locations were borings that were completed. Uh, the, the only one in which they had, uh, uh, shallow groundwater was B one, which is on the, the north side of the train track.
Just for the record, I'm sorry to wish you to run, uh, Mr. Edwards is referring to the, uh, PowerPoint slide with the aerial, uh, and borings are indicated, uh, that's prepared by my law to make room, and this is the aerial slide with the arrow in the bottom right-hand corner.
But there's another one that looks like this, that's not, that we have also.
The, the, for the work you did.
Uh, there's another image that's an aerial image, but it's not relevant to the, the soil.
That had to do with directional pipes, I think.
Uh, yeah, there is one that has.
So, um, getting back to the test pit, so that's the deep test pit you did with the backhoe, the one with the arrow, right?
No, this is all along the improvement, my, my test pits are shown, I, I believe they're on the, the site's line, so I'm saying, yeah, the segment. Yeah, they, they may have, they're, they're in the areas of the storm systems.
Well, how many did you do that aside?
We did one in each stormwater system, so if you go back, go back the other way, it's, it's just our site plan, for all it would be.
So can you identify which planet is so I can try to find it?
There, this is the sheet there.
Which?
Oh, it's, uh, it's probably a.
It's, was it S, I could say it was one way so clear, the bottom right?
S one.
So it's S one?
Yeah, I don't see the test pits, they may be on our erosion control plan, which I don't have here, but they're done in each stormwater system, so we did one here, or back off the back of this building, and one over here in the general area.
Wait, can you point them out again, cause I can't?
Stormwater systems are these big rectangles, in this case, we had buildings in the way in some of these spots.
That's where the detention basin is, that's, it's like a big tank that's underground, or is that where the rain, rain garden is?
That's where the, uh, the stormwater detention system will be, yeah, like, similar to a large.
And you have one on either side?
Yes, correct, there's one here, one here, and then there's also a rear.
And so you did two test pits, one for underneath each detention system where they're located?
As close as we can get to them, yeah, there, there, I believe there's a building.
And which one had nine and a half feet and which one had ten feet, or what were the back results?
I'd have to look farther to get you that answer, but one had no water at all, the other one had nine and a half feet of water.
Okay, so, oh, so what, what, oh, so what has no water, I have?
That one went down to ten feet, we didn't find any water.
Okay.
And, uh, it went beyond ten feet, and the results are on the other slide, but, uh, one of them had, we found water at nine and a half feet, one we found no water, Alora McBroom found water at ten.
When you do a test pit, is it a one-off deal or do you monitor over time, like, to see if it's high tide and maybe water is coming in somehow from below?
No, uh, we, we, we do a, a one test deal generally unless there's a condition where there's high groundwater and we're trying to determine, you know, the movement and then try to stay above it, but in this case, the water was so far down that, so we didn't.
Was this done in a period of season and high water, like, how would you, when, when was these test?
Uh, I'd have to look at the, the sheet, it's in the report. It was, yeah, it was, it was in the fall.
Okay, so. So. There's been discussion about infrastructure, old infrastructure, cause my understanding is like the community theater was built in around nineteen fourteen. There's all kinds of stuff underneath there, has anyone done some kind of a subsurface survey so we know what's under this whole site? Or how do you find out what it is, what could exist under there? Cause you get basically.
Nope, let's just, um, speak up and we'll try to pick up the audio on this laptop. Yep. We're gonna try to switch. I don't know, we're gonna try it. Cause your computer just died, right, Jason? Okay. Um, let's see whether we can pick up the audio on this one. Thanks. All right. All right, let's see.
Alora McBroom, they conducted, I believe, twelve soil tests throughout the entire neighborhood over a period of time. They were very consistent.
And that, you know, when those were taken?
I, you can sit on the sheet that there, not on this slide, but she.
And it could also change over time, I assume.
Um.
Over years, over years, it could get better or worse or higher or lower rate?
Generally, uh, no, I mean, you don't really see a fluctuation unless there's something major that would change, maybe, in length or something, uh, but no, you generally see pretty consistent ground, we often use, um, you know, for, for say for a septic system, we'll use test pits from a few years previously, and that'll be, you know, certifiable for the state health code for septic.
I'm just thinking, like, this post-septic system or suburban single-familyism, this is basically a basin you're creating under, I don't have a square footage of the building, you know the square footage of the building?
Uh, I believe it's, uh, not my head, it's, uh, it's broken.
Well, covering all the capanator, monkey capanator. Now, around twenty thousand, maybe it's less because there's some of the raindrops, the footstove, footprints of the.
It's on the plans here until they call it.
So you're talking about, and then when they cover a de-watering, what does that mean when you have to de-water, when you dig down and you, well, above the groundwater table, when you have to de-water, there's no water there, like, just explain to me.
Well, there's a chance that you could have some rise up slightly, and then there could be larger, de-watering just means that you dig a hole in it and it filled it with a little bit of water, so you've got to remove that water, whatever work you're doing, and then it would.
So that, even though that you're above the groundwater table for instance, test pits, there's still gonna be water there when you're digging down over the whole.
Not a, of exact science in the sense that we know to an inch where the water's gonna be.
Uh, for the record, Chris, Mr. Gibbs, uh, testified that he does a, he has to pay for, virtually advantage raised.
I'm sorry, I can't.
Mr. Gibbs, I believe his testimony was that by virtue of raising the garage to two feet, as he did, that there will not be a problem with the groundwater, however, leaving the, uh, the, uh, the de-watering plan is still part of the record, so indeed, there were the exact, that were the experience that the, that plan is in place.
Um, do, do we know the cubic yards of fill you have to dig out of there and excavate to build the, the garage down to, what is it, eight and a half feet below grade? If it's above the, if it's, what am I to have? Explain how deep it goes, if it's six amount of feet above.
I believe it's, I believe it's only about sixteen down, roughly, and I do not know the huge yardage of the job like that.
So there could be water in there, that could come either from groundwater or surface water that's percolating down during the project?
Right.
And then when you de-water, you have to de-water, but the water goes somewhere, do you card it off, it doesn't go into the nearby community during the project?
Well, um, I believe Mr. Gibbs' plan was to create dry wells, which is essentially a hole, uh, that he would pump the water into that was outside of the active construction area, that water would vertically back down and it would be kind of cyclical, but it would not be going outside of the.
And then speaking in the future, you're talking about a footprint, a three-dimensional footprint that goes down below the entire site, which no water will have any water going through, and when, whatever water exists in the underground water holes would go around it, if there is water.
It's on our, our test, I believe it will be below.
It would be below.
If they look at the results, yeah.
Thank you.
Good question.
Oh. Sure. You're saying it would be trucked to one of the. Your, the, the water being trucked off.
Um, I, I know that there's some of the, uh, utilities in the area do accept truck ways like you were accepting pumping, go to, most of them go to the Nogat, Superplant, I think, um, but I don't know if Fairfield accepts that kind of waste. But it would be trucked off to a, a site.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Chairman, um, Chris Smith, for the record, I can just do a little summary of what we submitted, uh, if you can, so, or we can respond to specific questions either tonight, relative to that, or we can continue the hearing, but I'll keep things moving, I do that, I can do that, but. I can, I can just walk through what's in here so that I can, everybody in the commission is in the public, this is all what's submitted, and it's in the, uh, town plan.
Just leave the microphone on.
Sorry. This was yesterday, there was a, uh, you know, might have been posted today. Could have made people happy around, we had to get everything pulled together, uh, last, uh, finish, short time, right? Uh, and in response to questions from, I think the chairman in particular, or other commission members, I did prepare a letter and stated, uh, yesterday, June twenty seventh, twenty twenty-two. And I did have attached to it, uh, three different exhibits I called, and I have the exhibits, I believe, aren't at the, uh, the bottom of the, uh, of each, each one. So in respe, and, and I'll just quickly go through it, uh, as indicated in the letter dated June twenty seventh, twenty twenty-two. Uh, in response to requests to provide additional information concerning the WPCA matters associated with the subject property, I attached the following. Number one is exhibit A, that's the December twenty twenty approval capacity for mixed-use development, subject to approving the sewer main line from eight inch to ten inch line. I believe that, um, your town planner might have provided you with that already, uh, at the management meeting with the vote. And exhibit B, is a request for, is a subsequent request in September of last year. It's a cover letter to myself, uh, to, uh, Chairman Ellison of the WPCA Board of Commissioners. And, uh, again, dated September fourteen, twenty twenty-one. And we request a confirmation of capacity for the proposed residential community, not a mixed-use development, which was the subject of December twenty twenty, uh, review and approval, without increasing sewer main line from eight inch to ten inch. So that was the request sent forth in exhibit B. There's a second link in, uh, attached to the, uh, request letter of September fourteen, twenty twenty-one, that the report that was prepared by Larry Edwards, civil engineer, with latest revision date, I nine, twenty twenty-one, that outlined the period of capacity that was available. You have a slide, Mr. Edwards can address that. Um, and then the last exhibit is exhibit C. And this is during the, uh, the review process with this last request to get confirmation. For the proposed residential community, without having to increase sewer permission line, uh, from eight inch to sewer main line, excuse me, from eight inch to ten inch. Uh, we were told at the January meeting by the chair that, uh, chair went, they were not qualified to make a decision on a spike that had occurred over the, I think, nine weeks of testing. So they referred it out to Wright Pierce, their expert, and, uh, in a email back to the staff at WPTA, dated January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Exhibit C, Dennis Divert to John Bodie and John Clancy, I believe, by your, uh, Water Police Control Department, Sewer Department. Item number four, I'll just read it. Quote, "Based on the information presented, the applicant has done their due diligence. Any additional investigative work is not necessary. I do not see any reason why the town should not approve these connections, even if the two seven nine point eight gallon per minute, gallon per minute is correct." That's the spike. Uh, "The benefit of the I and I amendment, we will be realizing," we're missing an error in the system, it should be applied accordingly to offset the initial pros and the pros. Um, we were, as indicated, and I have attached the appeal, uh, that we took from this decision. And as I indicated, representative of this commission, we certainly have videos from the vote there, January meeting was, uh, February one. Uh, when I was asking, February one, I mean, between the meetings, asking if they ever see the report from their experts, uh, we were not provided with a copy of it. Wasn't until after their decision, uh, where about, maybe it was a week later, I finally was able to get a copy of it, uh, from the staff. Uh, and, um, and that's, that's what it provided for, based on that, we decided they can feel. So, one thing, uh, with the twenty twenty approval, and I'll turn it over to, uh, Mr. Edwards, just walking through the numbers. Uh, there was a, um, was conceptual plan, I know Mr. Webb did ask for a, uh, commentary for Mr. Clancy that was provided, it's dated June twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, that we got to involve, and I believe that's part of your record. Uh, but in twenty twenty, twenty twenty, the, uh, December twenty twenty, the WPCA, uh, reviewed the mixed-use development, I think it was forty-three units. Get the exact numbers right in a minute. And, uh, they did approve it. Uh, for reading. Uh, it says, uh, "Move to conditionally approve, to accept the concept as presented on December ninth, twenty twenty, to WPCA with the condition to, with the condition to install a new tenant inspection applying for Stanford Street Three Road. Subject to DOT approval and permits." It's like getting an O S D permit here after you get an approval for this question. Additional point analysis. What we did in the seven weeks with this second go-around, and agreement from the utilities, uh, was my idea, December fourth, twenty twenty. So, but I'd like to point out, and to the commission, is that that approval was subject to, uh, the final plans coming in for the construction design. We're expanding and upgrading that sewer line, uh, and also to, uh, additional flow analysis, which we did do for the seven weeks. Last go-around, where the WPCA's expert applying, we definitely, no reason for us to do anything more on my plan, I think it was a twenty-five week for the testing. So that's in here, uh, and, uh, I know Mr. Edwards would, uh, so, so our position, sorry, Mr. Chairman, I see.
I'm writing, yeah.
Right in the order. Uh, do you, if you have a question, I'm where the
No, I, I do. Um, are we, would you agree though, because I think, as you said, you referenced Mr. Clancy's response to Mr. Webb, that, as I understand it, WPC, for the twenty twenty, uh, permit, WPC is expecting a new application to come to them. Or an application or some kind of request to come back to them. Anyway, new application or request, what is it, Mr. Webb? So I, so I get it, right? Um, I apologize.
Well, it takes, uh, Mr. Chairman, quote, "The conceptual plan that was approved on December ninth, this is Mr. Clancy and Mr. Webb dated June twenty-third, twenty twenty-two." Sorry, Mr. Webb.
No, please.
You wanted to read it.
No, please.
If you have it, I can wait.
I'll just read it.
Uh, quote, I apologize. Quote, "The conceptual plan that was approved on December ninth, twenty twenty, was to increase the existing eight-inch sewer line ten inch from Stanford to Street Two Reed Road. Additional flow monitoring was completed in January twenty twenty-two. This conceptual plan needs DOT approval and will need to be re-presented with the WC, WPCA Commission for their final approval. All will need final approval from the WPCA Committee to connect the post-developed, their new sewer system." Please.
I don't need to agree with that.
I don't need any approval from the WPCA to connect, there's connection already servicing this property, and it's been there for one time, and then train month station one time, so that was approved by somebody, I presume the WPCA.
But they're saying sort of twenty twenty permit, twenty, yeah, twenty twenty permit, you need to come back to them for a couple of presentations to finalize the outstanding items that you referenced, the DOT approval. Sounds like you have the flow chart five, the flow, uh, line, and that's fine. But it sounds like you still need to go back to WPCA.
I was going, when I was gonna ask Mr. Edwards, is what has to go back to the WPCA, it's our, it's my understanding, and Mr. Edwards clarified this season, engineer this way he does. For the final detailed plans, the construction drawings that they're gonna wanna see. Uh, so just like here, you approve the building, and then before we can get a building permit, somebody has to see the final detailed plans. They, they, there's nobody else to review them except them, uh, so they will, they would be reviewing the final detail plans. Uh, they, we already, the conceptual plan is attached to the exhibit, my exhibit A, which shows the drawings. There's three sheets there showing the, the, uh, sewer line, the, the operator. And, and it would be subject, we don't have to go back to them after DOT approval, we have to get DOT approval to do all work. Uh, but we don't, it's not a conditional approval, it's like needing an O S D approval here. So I, my understanding is we have to submit the final drawings, the, the construction drawings, uh, and they would be, they would review that. But the point is, we have an approval for the capacity, the capacity with that.
Why are you saying the capacity stuff? That's the, I hit that, but I mean, it's just, you still haven't, I think, uh, normally you come to other, anyhow, it comes to us, normally have sewer, well, yeah. This is not a button belt that we're used to. You have still some conditions, I guess the next question that comes to mind is, it didn't be, had DOT approval? Um, or they still, you still need to go to DOT to get their approval?
We haven't gone anywhere, we have to come here first and get our approvals from this commission before we're gonna take the step and do anything relative to upgrading the sewer. That would be, that would be the next step, be like, well, yeah, that's why O S D doesn't wanna see anything. Sure DOT is gonna tell us go away, because we get an approval from this commission, just like if, if we're doing improvements to Black Rock, Terrific.
But your position is that, not as far as you can with the twenty twenty permit approval, you need us to act. Uh, and then you'll go back, presumably, we, if we grant it, then you go back with final drawings to get the final approval for twenty twenty. Ignoring twenty twenty-two for now.
Okay, we're not, I don't.
I mean, regardless of your position, my understanding and points, it's, it's hard for me to step in the shoes of that, especially me having I suspected twenty, if that piece of, survive, or you win on your appeal, switch over to your twenty twenty-two permit. But ignoring that right now. Your position is, you've gone as far as you can with twenty twenty application, you need our approval, you need something from us before you can go back to WPCA with final drawings.
We're not gonna do final drawings, and we'll go to, go to DOT until we have an approval. That's what it's not. That, that's how you would do it.
That's how, that's my point, that's, you're saying that's how you do it. You're just, I'm not used to coming to where an applicant coming with, by all accounts, a conditional approval, waiting on us to go back. Now, that could be just because I, you know, something like this, or this case may be, I, you know, I don't know who this draft that's there for a living, but that's not what I'm used to. But that's what you're saying, this was the process that we
Of the approval. Jason Edwards, for the record.
Uh, regarding DOT, uh, they, my experience will not even start reviewing, um, construction plans or design plans until you have a local approval. So you would be that way, and don't even
But you, okay, local crew, as in planning, so, not local sewer.
Right.
And, and Mr. Larry Edwards, I can, it's on remotely, Mr. Chairman, he can respond. Would, I don't know if we have a
If you have things going to the same spot, I just wanna find these procedure questions out. Go ahead, please. I mean, Commissioner Francis, go ahead.
Um, your conditional approval is based on the twenty twenty?
We have a, uh, an approval for sewer capacity based on upgrading the sewer line from eight inch to ten inch. If we do that increase from eight inch to ten inch, there's going to be a substantial amount taken out of the available. The delta that's involved with going from the mixed-use development proposal for this, there's four thousand fifty-six gallons per minute. That's like point zero zero three percent of the available capacity, less than one percent that would be taken out by that.
What's?
Oh, and excuse me, that's not Mr. Uh, and that's the subject of this appeal that we have, but there's still almost twenty percent of capacity available in the
But, but our, but it's
That's what, that's, that's what we're litigating.
You have to speak up, Meg.
Additional approval for?
I believe it was forty-three units and a certain amount of square footage.
And now it's sixty, residential, no reversal at all, residential. That's greater.
The, the additional sewer capacity will be four thousand fifty-six gallons per minute, which is, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Larry Edwards, approximately.
Did anybody hear me? Am I?
Related.
This is
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, this is Larry Edwards, for the record. Um, engineer with J. Edwards Associates. Yeah, I was the one that did the calculations for the sewer, um.
Larry, wait a minute.
Go ahead and try.
Okay, I, I, I couldn't get in before, but I think I can now. Um, yeah, basically what, what Chris went over, the increase in the, um, flow from the site, from the, I believe it was forty-three units, as he said, and up to what now is sixty-three units, would increase the flow from, um, basically fifty-one hundred and fifty gallons per day to ninety-two hundred and six gallons per day, are an increase of four thousand fifty-six. Now, you take that against
Larry, it's Chris Smith, you can just wait a minute, okay, we just put the slide, uh, Emily, just put the slide up. Go ahead, sorry.
Okay. I can't see it, so.
It's on its way.
Okay, I've got it now. Um, okay. Oh, I had it, okay, there we go. Um, okay, the calculated, again, I'll just run down through these numbers, we went over in the last meeting. Uh, the existing eight-inch sewer line would have a capacity of five hundred and eighty-two thousand four hundred and eighty gallons per day. And, um, we basically, um, with all of the, uh, additional projects that were, that are proposed and have, one of them, I believe, has already been constructed, and our project, the total flow going through that eight-inch pipe will be, uh, four thousand, four hundred and seventy-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-two gallons per day, which would be eighty-one point five percent of the total capacity of that eight-inch pipe. Now you go to the ten-inch pipe, which is what we have agreed to do, um, as a condition of the previous sewer approval. That ten-inch pipe, it, you only think it's two inches bigger, but the volume, uh, capacity is considerably more, basically double the amount. Um, so the capacity now becomes one million one hundred and sixty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-four gallons per day. So you take that, um, amount of utilization for our, I'm trying to make sure I got the right numbers here. Or the, um, original project that they were reviewing would have been thirty-nine point seven percent. And with the increase to, from the sixty, or forty-three units to the sixty-three units, it would increase that potential usage to forty point six percent. So it's basically increasing the capacity by, um, nine tenths of a percent. Um, which is still a insignificant portion of the total capacity of the new pipe. And, um, so if you take just the increase in the, um, in the flow from the, um, from the increase from forty-three units to sixty-three units, that total increase on our site would be four thousand fifty-six, uh, gallons per day. And that would represent point three five percent of the total capacity of the ten-inch pipe. So again, a very insignificant number. The reality is that with the, even without the ten-inch pipe, the sewer line would handle the capacity, but it would be eighty-one percent of the capacity. And with the ten-inch pipe, the numbers just, um, are in, basically down to the number of forty point six, which is less than half of what it was, um, under the original eight-inch proposal. So, um, in, basically in summary, with the installation of the new eight-inch, new ten-inch pipe, the, um, the sewer line would have adequate capacity to handle either the forty-three original units or the sixty-three units proposed, um, with the latest application before you.
And, and Mr. Edwards, can you hear me?
Yep.
Uh, just, uh, and just for confirmation, is the, uh, the property currently served, is, is the property currently connected to the, uh, Fairfield Municipal, Municipal Sewer System?
Uh, yes, it is.
And it's served by that system, correct?
That's correct.
And relative to any final approval from the WPCA, is it, um, isn't it true that the final detailed plans for the construction would have to go back to the WPCA and or its final detailed plans for the construction would have to go back to the W P C A and or its staff?
That's correct. It would be the same as the, as getting a building permit from the, uh, Building Department after you get approval. Uh, you have to submit the finished plans for them to re- review and approve.
Similar to, to a zoning approval. Post zoning approval, you get your, your final detailed plans, construction plans for the, uh, Building Department?
Yes, that's exactly the same thing, yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Edward, um, have you devised final plans for the expansion? Eight inch pipe to the. Mr. Edwards, have you devised plans for, uh, final plans for the connection of, um, uh, the sewer, uh, connection with the ten inch pipe as opposed to an eight inch?
I didn't get the question there. I, I heard the last part of it.
I can answer. Yeah. Yeah, Jason, Jason's going to respond, Larry.
Okay.
Uh, we've completed a detailed conceptual plan, so I, it is, uh, probably about seventy five percent design. We have to do a few additional test borings to completely verify the depth utilities. But other than that, we, uh, yes, that was my.
So, um, if you're, if you're seventy five percent into the process of, you know, final plans, uh, where they can, they'll be upgraded. And it's quite a bit. So, uh, uh, that means, uh, devised, yeah, about actually making that connection to the, by the ten inch pipe to the system on the road, right?
Um, I'm not totally following your question, but we, we have a path that we determined is feasible. But we can make the connection. There's construction details, there's, uh, comments from utility companies, there's things like that, comments from D O T, you know, those are going to take time to, uh, an effort to respond to, but we have a path that we established that it can.
But additional test borings or necessary?
Um, if they're required by D O T, but possibly, um, but we did do, uh, I believe, four vacuum excavated holes in the post road to verify the depth of the, the, um, electric lines, the, the four forty five K V electric lines that runs down the middle of the road, as well as the fiber optic cables. We found the bottoms of those, we designed the sewer to accommodate all of those.
And also a decision by the design team that it would be preferable to try to connect to the sewer on, on foot without having to upgrade the pipe from the eight inch.
Uh, not following that one.
Made an application in twenty twenty two, um, to connect the proposed project uh, by a different method that wouldn't require upgrades, uh, from the eight inch pipe to the.
Yeah, and we, we didn't propose to the upgrades of the lines of that application.
Yeah, we didn't, not many of the quality of it's broken.
I, that's correct. That, that application did not include any, any proposed upgrades. Well, I'm sorry, twenty twenty, we submitted it to, we submitted it to September of twenty twenty, just, just, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, it's been a twenty twenty one. Uh, the denial without precedent. Um. But your preference is to proceed in your twenty twenty one, uh, proposal.
Our position with this commission is that with the twenty twenty approval, we have sufficient capacity. The twenty twenty one application, which doesn't require the upgrade, that there's sufficient capacity created by right peers. That's, that's the subject of litigation, which we're not going to get into, but I do have it, it's part of the records that you can see that. But our position is if we do the upgrade, there's capacity, more than no capacity. And under Connecticut law, if you're tied into a system, there's capacity theory, it can't be denied.
You speak up a little, I can't hear.
Yeah, I forgot, I thought it was, I thought I had the benefit of it sitting here.
Just speak up, fine.
Uh, and, uh, but anyways, that's, that's our position is that, again, we connected, we, property is connected to the sewer, it's being serviced by the sewer, and, uh, with and without an upgrade, it can be serviced and served by that sewer and, uh, and exam, and with, based on the, uh, Mr. Vice Chairman, the September twenty twenty one request, that was simply a request for the capacity, confirm the capacity available in the existing line servicing the property. So that did not involve any additional work in the road. I think, I think you might have asked that as part of the question, I'm sure.
Um, what do you my question? Well, calculated, I can't hear. What you calculated, I'm semi. Neither of the engraved or posted. But really, you would change it over.
Um, uh, Commissioner, I'm going to defer to, sorry, I'm going to defer to Larry Edwards to respond to that. He did, he did the analysis.
I have to hear that question again.
So the question is, uh, did the analysis that you performed relative to calculating the capacity available include consideration for two other approvals, those two approvals being? Commissioner Francis?
Yes, our, our, our calculations included both of, of those, uh, projects, along with ours.
Any other questions? Uh, Mr. Edwards, for the, to get over the line for, uh, the twenty twenty application to get the final approval, is it your professional opinion within a reasonable degree of engineering?
I, I'm losing the end of your statement there, and I, I'm sorry.
What's his last name again? Mr. Edwards, um, for the twenty twenty application to get the final approval from the W P C A, is it your professional opinion within a reasonable degree of engineering certainty that you will be able to meet whatever conditions, uh, that are outstanding commit, outstanding conditions from the W P C A to get the final approval?
Yes, it's my, my opinion that they are, that we can do that, yes.
And you, Mr. Edwards, uh, in the room with me, you've been talking about building and D O T and stuff, do you have a similar opinion?
Yes, I agree with that. Dave's going to answer a question later.
Um, any other questions for?
Um, so this, just how I understand, um, the, the appeal that's pending in court is not on the old concept review approval, which was for an older application, much smaller, it was for the denial of the permanent base of this project, and that's still pending in court.
Based on this, this, uh, proposed development without having to do the upgrade, yes. We just, we, that's important.
So that's still pending, and that's still being argued, that's not being.
We haven't even briefed you. Just was filed earlier this spring, it's denied in February.
But if this whole thing is resolved the way you're saying it's resolved, why, why is the case still pending again?
Because if we prevail in that case, like, I will be able to tie into the system without having to do the upgrade.
Although it's based on not having to do the ten inch pipe upgrade.
Right. For the W P C A's experts that.
And then a question you serve. Traffic next.
Ready for traffic?
Whatever your, whatever.
I think we're ready for traffic.
Awesome.
Now we've been waiting for that.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
Thank you.
We do have slides for this.
Are the slides at the end?
Yes, they are. Is it a couple pages? Big blue page.
All right, uh, for the record, my name is Neil Linsky. I am, uh, Senior Transportation Planner with my own S L R Consulting. Not too long ago, my own group. Our traffic engineering and transportation planning service group. So I, I helped work on the traffic and parking study. Those flags down, we want to get to. So, okay, here we go. So what you see before you is a typical scope, or industry standard scope. Different elements that go into a traffic. Traffic impact study for development. And we look at all of these, putting parking. Next slide. And really, the first step, first thing we do in a typical traffic state for development function is we try to estimate how much new traffic particular development could be expected to generate. Which is what we did here, and the way we typically do that is we, is we look at statistical data published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, I T E. And what they call their traffic trip generation. Um, which is a basically a compilation of basically traffic counts, different developments, different land uses. They crunch them up, the numbers. You get some, on trip generation rates. And what we did is we looked at that, not only for the proposed development, but for the land uses, businesses that were part of the prior current site, really. We took a look, we compared, and what we see in front of you is, really wouldn't be crunching those numbers when it came up with the. The proposed sixty unit with residential development is really expected to generate less traffic than what was there before, which is there. Until recently, we put in a coffee shop, a juice bar, general retail, I think a barber shop, yoga studio, medical ops, so there was definitely stuff there. But we check, it's not a greenfield development, so we develop. Just the site. So, at the end of the day, in terms of the traffic associated with this site, we estimate it's going to have less traffic than what it had in the past.
Mr. Edwards, did you have full account, uh, of what the, what the businesses that were there, just, just based on what the I T standards are for the businesses that were there?
It was just based on the I T. Part of the trouble is Stupul, the prior site project really got going again during the COVID pandemic, just based on difficulties. This is actually used down. Um, but also fitted down town. Also difficult, especially a mixed use site, it's difficult to get vehicle counts, because the site, as it exists today, it's very little, very little on-site. So you don't know exactly where everybody is driving to, along the street, down the apartment, different public lots. We target the transportation.
It can be, it could be multiple trips, they can go down for, uh, name any other place, they decide to grab a coffee before. Maybe, when we're looking at the existing developments, by you, you know, we're residents of Fairfield, we know the area, you know, looking at what the I T standards are, while very general and accepted, but very general, talking about specific sites, that can vary off what the I T provides, lesser or greater. Because, as, you know, with my knowledge of the area, I would say that the existing development does much less just from knowing, knowing the area, going down there myself, using the barber shop and stuff like that. So, but in this case, while COVID wasn't done, you know, we had an issue with COVID, currently have an issue with COVID, but certainly the, the effect on businesses was more pronounced back with the previous application, which was twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, whatever it was. This past year, it's somewhat reopened, we're not maybe back to full capacity. But you haven't done, you haven't gone down to see what the actual tra, full traffic is currently for this stuff.
I think it's, we haven't talked about that.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, and, um, understanding that you use I T statistics, those aren't, they're miles around the country, right? It could be California, it could be North Dakota. Maybe as you continue your presentation, can you tell us how those statistics are relevant to Fairfield, because, you know, we vary from town to town culturally, we have three schools within a half mile of this area. So I just want to know how they're relevant, those statistics to this area. Because I, I don't think they should be considered if they're not.
Just, just, we followed in typically what traffic methodology looks at. Obviously, we want to extend, best extent possible, really look at and use that when it's vocal. It's not always easy or cost effective. Or even necessary. For example, we looked at the existing development estimates, even if those are high, you have them, it would still be similar, or the public development estimate in traffic, which doesn't exist yet, still be similar, or even still a little bit less. And in essence, we're still a, at least a little bit of a reduction in traffic.
Commissioner Broad?
Um, regarding the assumptions that went into existing, um, was it, was it running peak hours? So it's your, you'll, it's your contention that adding a hundred and six, that we're just wanting to reduce the number of trips between eight and, what, seven, eight and nine in the morning, I think, that was the time we checked for the rush hour?
Could you repeat the question?
I think you checked for, uh, checked traffic counts during rush hour, right?
Runway traffic counts?
Eight to nine in the morning?
What your, what time range are the peak hours?
Uh, let me double check. We did do runway counts, I'll stand with you. We did those.
I think you said. For this, for this chart.
Okay, next question about this chart. So the assumption behind this chart, uh, on another page in here, um, on a page, it is farther into the report, the appendix tables. And it looks like the vast majority, um, of the trips are for the coffee shop, right? A hundred forty one trips, and there's a more detailed chart that tracks up the hundred fifteen number. And that's current site coverage, but I don't understand, I'll be, this. Are you, when you do the comparisons, are you looking at Upland Road or Sanford Street?
Looking at the traffic that going to and from or associated with this, regardless of where it's.
When you're comparing it to the traffic that generates before the development, right? You're, you're, you're saying it was a hundred fifteen trips before the development and twenty to twenty five trips after development? Because you're getting rid of all those businesses, so there won't be any more traffic. But I don't understand how how Sanford Street could have a hundred forty one trips for Las Vegas Coffee Shop, because that is usually not access from Sanford Street, it's usually access from Upland, which is not going to have any traffic coming out of this site. The, the driveways are going into Sanford.
Those hundred electrics, they're spread out amongst different departments.
I don't.
Bringing down the single number.
So, so the whole assumption, I'm just saying, the whole foundation of your argument that you're having less traffic generated from the site after than you are now, based on basically a hundred forty one trips in the weekday rush hour to Las Vegas generated from this site. But I don't understand that, because I don't think that many people park on Sanford Street and go through Dolly Walk to go to Las Vegas. I just don't think it's a hundred forty, I don't, I, I challenge that assumption, that doesn't make sense.
Businesses, traffic, that's the numbers of their component of that. That traffic is coming and going from different areas, not necessarily saying, or it could be part of the.
Well, you're saying it's the coffee shop that generates a hundred forty one trips. Part of the hundred fifteen number is a whole bunch of numbers that add up to one fifty six, and then you give a credit for being in a T O D neighborhood or whatever, it ends up going, get rounded down to a hundred fifteen trips. Part of that is assumption that a hundred forty one trips are going to be for a coffee shop. is assumption that a hundred forty-one trips are gonna be for a coffee shop, and the only coffee shop I know of is Las Vitas, and I don't, I think people mostly go into Las Vitas from the Uckwood roadside, which is not gonna be generating any traffic after this development, because there's no driveways on that Uckwood Road. So I don't understand, which side are you looking at?
It's regardless of which side. It's the traffic that's associated with that business. That could be parking every, anywhere and everywhere downtown, and then walking.
Well, it's not even how, it's the location really matters. Because we're like, we're talking about a lot of stuff being added on the Sanford Street side and zero being added on the Uckwood Street side, because there's no driveways on Uckwood Street on the new proposal, right? So we're really only talking about Sanford Street, that's the only impact this is gonna have. So to me, the foundational assumption that you have a huge amount of traffic now is gonna go down when you add a hundred and six bedrooms. It doesn't make sense to me, because I I just don't think it's that high right now. I don't see how it could be that high, and I think, I don't think these uh numbers that you pick, you probably, I'm assuming, just based on what you said, you're you're taking um statistics um that are compiled from around the country and saying, well, there's a coffee shop here. That normally generates this many trips during rush hours, because people drink their coffee, but but what if that's not accurate for this exact location and the actual traffic patterns that people actually do? If that assumption is wrong, well, then the diminution of traffic based on the new development is wrong. So that's what I've I'll I'll let you continue. That's just a problem I have with this chart.
Well, I wouldn't put too much relevance on the chart, you know, because when we're looking at the existing traffic. For comparison purposes, we're estimating the future compared to the future traffic. Which, again, the days on the top row will be the morning peak hour, twenty to twenty-five in the future. Even if we just looked at that along, on in and out of the site.
That's just my hundred, really, a hundred and six bedrooms only are generating twenty trips during rush hours, but that's a different question.
So, we're on going, but and let's, let's begin with the morning peak hour and proposed development, twenty to twenty-five estimated total vehicle trips. Would you break that up on entering and exiting trips? You're looking at maybe ten to fifteen either direction. And you split that by different routing, because you could go north on Sanford Street. Carter Henry Drive, south. By the time you look at the different routing, you split up what are already small numbers. It's quite minor. We did look at the traffic, all of the proposed development estimated traffic into and out of the site at Sanford Street. We analyze that following typically industry procedures, what they call, you know, what they call a capacity analysis driveway. Which was in traffic flowing, there's a couple of congestion right at the driveway. What we found in the first row, both ways, it's primarily because of the low volume traffic at Sanford Street, it's expected to operate point well, level of service A on an A M F spectrum of vehicles. For the driveway operations, even when we forget about the existing traffic estimates. With future traffic estimates for this site. The traffic flow into and out of the driveway directly at Sanford Street is expected to operate excellent thirty peak hours, invisible hours. A level of service A. That is also an indication that with traffic standpoint. It's not a huge major traffic. Also, it's just playing with the fact that it's in downtown, so that even trips going to be to people. April trip. Like, people who live here, their number nine. Walking to other places to work downtown, and I would be driving here.
Do you take, uh, because this is so close to the train, how does that impact um your IT using IT standards? I assume decreases it, but how how do you base that? What methodology do you use?
We, we look at two things. I T E has their own statistics, because a lot of I T you got is based on suburban sites. You want to sort of convert that to a more mixed use, but they have what they call a trip reduction rate, which can vary for different use. Residential, half of the vehicle trips that you initially might estimate for suburban style development might be, might be replaced, half the vehicle trips might be walking trips. I don't have the exact numbers, but what we did in our studies, we also asked E M T. They have their own have their own trip reduction. Their typical trip reduction rate right within, say, half a mile, that's where our transportation, you take a twenty percent reduction. Because I believe what we did is twenty percent. Our study.
Any other questions, or is she? Commissioner Harrison?
Can you um tell us what time, what's the peak time of day for morning commute? What was that?
Well, we
And and the
Yeah, what we did to do to catch with Sanford Street, you know, idea of what the peaking of the traffic the roadway traffic is, for for instance, in the morning, it was eight to nine o'clock. We did. And five o'clock to six o'clock in the afternoon.
I have a question, but I've lived here many years, and I commuted to New York. Took the train, commuted, you know, ninety-five. And traffic starts way before eight o'clock, I can assure you. We have a few schools around that area that start way before eight o'clock in the morning. So I I I question that. And if you drive around town at four o'clock, that's peak hour now. So I I think your your timing is off by a few hours, so you may wanna, you know, reexamine that.
Think of one, you could have occurrences where there are sustained peaks, where the single sixty-minute period is just light peak, but you might have a busy, what they call peak hour spreading. You might have a big, really a busy morning period, six AM to ten. Where the tiny in that sustained period is the eight o'clock to nine o'clock type of thing. Yes, you, I mean, it's not like this eight o'clock to nine o'clock is the peak. That you're drawn off before and after that. Which I think is the case here, you have a sustaining peak hour spreading.
Commissioner? Go ahead.
In the, I think at the front of the traffic study, this development was considered, I think it was worded as a T O D development? Would you define residential eight thirty G application, T O D development? Or are we just take, kind of taking advantage of the the amenities down there that would probably make it a T O D development, like the restaurants and whatnot?
T O D development is is it rated?
Yeah, I'm aware, I was aware of the definition too, and I don't think it's that, so.
Really, any development that's not any sizable development, development that's within short walking distance of a train station, I would consider a T O D.
Right, but you're not
Regardless of the eight thirty G.
In fact, you're getting rid of commercial development, you're getting rid of this, this would be just residential. So I I don't I think that's kind of worded improperly, just from my view.
Not in my opinion. Really, because it's like
Okay.
Commissioner, your question.
On Sanford Street, there's a lot of truck delivery to a lot of restaurants. Hosted in in Sanford. Lots of truck parking hall, trapped in
Which is better for a downtown, I agree.
Very few parking spaces. Most of them parking them in, then they do what?
On the site, they park on the site. Well.
That doesn't
I don't know what to tell you, I'm a little I heard about it before. But in many downtowns to enjoy the work. Especially on when it's essentially a side street. Door block. It's just like a block.
Parking
And maybe everyone wants to look at that, because you could change the sign. As a basis. As delivery only spaces. And I was not excited about what we looked at. So because the, I don't know, I just don't know where or what businesses they're associated with, it could be associated with the per se. But I think that, my opinion it's very important. Delivery somehow find a way to make it work, business did. Obviously, that's gonna continue. And you get downtown. Problem. There are always many for to convert perhaps some of those certain times of the day to delivery spaces. Someone have an arrow in front of you, there is a strange no parking area that exists today. I assume newer vehicles take advantage of that to park. Vehicles park in that, that's going to remain.
Commissioner Bravman, and Commissioner Harrison?
Um, Mr. Litzke, uh, you have uh three years of crash data starting in January twenty nineteen, and then going through April one twenty twenty-two, right? And one of those years is twenty twenty during the COVID pandemic. Right, so um there there were a few cars on the road. Do you have any objection to providing crash data from uh twenty seventeen?
No, not at all. It's readily available, we could look at that. We know this is gonna be very varied. The Connecticut Crash Gallery Poppy has that all up there and easier to find, so we could look at that. Certainly.
I'm gonna restart the rest of my questions, perhaps, to you, before furthering your presentation.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, um, I just had, you know, it appears that pedestrian safety is really a concern in this report. Excited a few times, um there's a critical need for motorists to get right away of people walking on the sidewalk. Have, did this report take into account children's, pedestrians, Fairfield has a lot of bikers, we have three schools in that vicinity. We now have a pilot scooter program, there's a lot of activity outside of cars. So I'm wondering how you took that into account when you did your study.
Right, so especially downtown. Um, really what we did is we try to improve things or make recommendations. Not making things worse. But these sites, if the surrounding site has sidewalks today, those are going to remain. To jump to the conclusion, but we we can, or we put forth a recommendation that the town and the DOT discussed about looking at the signal down over one. Proving the curb ramps at the crosswalk to be A D A acceptable. I'm stating. Um at the site driveways itself. Um, slides forward. But now, um we made a point at the driveways, and because the building is very close to the T O D, it's gonna be very close to the we we made a point to work with the architect to improve his ability to the greatest extent possible, for example, between exiting vehicles of the driveways and people walking sidewalk. And he, they incorporated wall openings right there at the really the locations where the sidewalk, the new building is gonna be very, very close to it. So you want wall openings so you can maximize the visibility. That's a key strategy. I wish.
Okay. The head care in the department that did bring up potential blockage of you um relates to the, to the sideline, was that addressed?
Can we, you're, I assume you're gonna have a consultation.
All right, I'll, I'll continue.
The sideline literally next. So why don't we give that presentation that we can get the sideline now?
What I was just talking about is really the last goal, which is this is visibility between pedestrians on the sidewalk right at the driveways. When we step back, go to the top, when you hear a transportation tire in the traffic, and you hear a car walk. Side line, what they look, typically looking at is space distances between motorists and other vehicles, so that's what we started with. And what we started with is what is known as the intersection site distance. All criteria that's in the Connecticut D O Ts, highway, roadway design. Standard stuff that we look at. So the the ISV or intersection site distance is really the only thing we look at, that's what it boils down to is what the driver exiting the site drive. We wanna make sure, we wanna look at. And they look to the left, look to the right. And see approaching vehicle. The vision. Which is a little bit, little bit more complicated in downtown environment. But when you just look at the highest the criteria. Based on the large part of the approaching speed of traffic, it was Stanford Street, which is part of the town data that we did get, we did, did it speed up. People are riding at a low speed limit, the eighty-fifth percentile of speed that we flagged in over the course of forty-eight hours was in twenty-four to twenty-five miles, which is good. Really, we want slower speed than downtown. So based on the criteria. Looking to uh looking to the right. Looking to the left first. You can see the let me, let me dial up, looking to the right. You can see to the you can see I mean, two or just beyond two hundred eighty feet, see me the criteria.
What is the criteria?
Two hundred eighty feet for twenty-five miles.
So you're headed up notes.
Well, I believe you exceeded, I don't
Oh, I'm sorry, I required silence to a
You're requiring you can go with Carter Henry Drive.
So what is, just if you're looking at it now, what is the sideline then? Uh, that you have?
It's one, we can see, have the exact number, but it exceeds the criteria. It's a Carter Henry, two Carter, towards Carter Henry Drive. Don't twenty-eight. We can pull up a couple of slides down, some drawings, which actually might visualize.
Next one. Okay.
Now north is to the so, the physical graphic in front of you is the east driveway, so looking to the right from the east driveway to the what we're showing is the side line.
And we're gonna be exiting from looking at this the north side.
Correct, yes. And we also look at looking to the left for Route One, which is restricted.
I just have a few more quick questions, because I know there's some openings, right? As you pull, you're pulling out of the development, you're cutting.
Okay, thanks, that's
I believe so, correct. And so, um, so the the sideline of a hundred eighty, I'm sorry.
Two eighty.
Two eighty. That is from what point, when you exit the
That's actually beyond, that's the point where you're, when you're not, this sideline is not looking to them. So it's a lot of those points to make. When you're exiting, when you will be exiting this site. You're gonna get a stop sign. By the side.
Yep.
You're a stop there, follow the law, and you're gonna look at
The side, the stop sign would have to be inside the road, it's probably gonna be on the sidewalk. So, so
Sorry, Commissioner Ford.
First step is you look, stop within the site, you have behind sidewalk, make sure there's no pedestrians. And then there's really a second step in the downtown environment, where you wanna get closer to the road to really try to be able to see a few vehicles. You're going to slowly edge out onto the side. Typical for a downtown environment. And you're gonna look to the left, or you'll look to the right, to the right, you're gonna get two eighty or two hundred eighty feet side distance or beyond. Looking to the left, you can see the Route One, which is restricted because Route One is where it is rolling. Benefit of fact that it's a T intersection of the road, because people have to turn left or right on Sanford for Route One, so they're thus doing so at a slower speed. So the criteria is actually less than twenty miles. And to be honest, I imagine most people taking the left or right. From Route One, it's just going through three, maybe. Probably at that point as slow as fifteen miles per hour. Which has, which corresponds with the ISD. Guideline of around one hundred and sixty feet, which is what we show here. But ISD is not the only thing you look at in a downtown. There is on street parking, even though we look at the Connecticut City Design Manual, they don't consider on street parking. To be a permanent obstruction or restriction on intersection site distances. At different times of day, there can never be no. Nonetheless. They're pretty on. So we look at what's called stopping site distance. It is also. Or you could just go back, correct.
Let me, I'm sorry, if we move on to the words, stopping site distance. For ISD. The calculations that you have. Going north and south. Where is the car or where is the driver? You're making those calculations.
The driver's location is fifteen feet and fifteen feet back from the travelway. This brings up the point, so I think the engineering department said it should be from the curb line. It's not necessarily a requirement, but I think the DOT's Highway Design Manual, especially in urban environments. On street parking. Especially the problem that the travelway eight feet away from the curb. That then lets you measure that ten to fifteen feet offset or step back. Further into the road essentially, there's no option, and they're even a little taller. We can step the travelway, start a point step back from that.
Let me ask you in a different way. Ten to fifteen feet from the travelway doesn't give me a point of reference. Far unless you can give me a point of reference from that. How far from the building?
The building is behind.
How, about how far?
We can talk a bit about eye blocking it, least two feet behind.
Okay, so ten to fif- ten to fifteen feet, five feet is pretty. A good size considering where we're looking at. So how? Can you be more specific about how far off the travelway you are?
Yeah, it might be a good idea to consume in. So now here we have a legend that says ten feet step back to fifteen feet step back. And the apex of the. The sideline triangle at the driveway exit shows both points.
Now, we're talking the green one for ISD, right?
Three. You know, I apologize, but I know that I think engineering has recommended on that fifteen feet. You know, so they added fifteen. I don't think that might be the red line.
That's true. Okay, but that's where the ten to fifteen feet is. You'd have ten feet from the travelway, which is. From what point in the travelway? The middle of the road?
From the edge of the, basically where the. The outer point of the on street.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Yeah, so whatever. You have the curb.
The travelway is basically. The roadway except the inner part of the roadway minus the.
So if we're looking at the parking, the little dots where parking would be, it's just the outside of it because that's where you'd be traveling if there was a parked car.
Even if you were with a parked car.
You use, you use ten feet.
We use ten and fifteen.
Oh, I see, okay. And you're saying that regardless of ten or fifteen feet, you would meet the sideline criteria of both directions.
That's correct.
Okay, now, but it also lies upon looking. Through parked cars.
You're correct.
Okay, now, I heard what you said, at least that Connecticut DOT. Uh, they don't, at least how you just said it, they don't rely upon parked cars because they're movable and around. But I was under the impression, either Connecticut or local, whatever it is, that if on street parking is so consistent. That parked cars should be considered. Um, as objects like a bush, for example, um, for sideline. Sideline calculations.
I, I, I could. Familiar with this issue of whether on street parking, parked cars or parking spaces constitute obstructions for accountability. And I did this, and I think it was your traffic, your town engineer with your traffic consultant effectively indicating that they follow the. The ITE guidelines, where those, and DOT, excuse me, where they're not treated as obstructions. And I know I can get that email.
No, and I think we're going to. No, and I remember that from Be Trill, the difference being that that was much more. Much temporary, much more temporary, exceptionally more temporary than the downtown area, especially in this area. So we will be, I mean, obviously, we're going to be reaching out to our own engineers for their opinions on that. But that's why I'm bringing it up, because it's my understanding that when you have such a consistent parking. Particularly in this application where you're relying upon. On street parking to meet your parking demand, which I suspect would be parking close to your building, which would be affecting those sight distances, sideline distances. That they should be. You can't, you cannot necessarily need to see through them. You have to consider them as bushes, for lack of a better word, immovable objects. So we'll, I mean, if that's, we'll have to get our, we'll reach out to our engineering department and for their opinion in this respect. That's my understanding, but it sounds like, uh, Mr. Linsky, you are treating them as see-through. Not obstruction.
We see through, we are following the DOT's guidance. Which just simply states that on street parking is not. A permanent obstruction. Does differentiate between there's some on street parking or how often on street. The ISD Conduct Guidance does not. Distinction.
I apologize again. And that goes back to my earlier point about being on the site when you have these ITE standards. Uh, general standard, whether it be national or state. You haven't seen, you haven't taken, taken, gone down and seen the site and see how the parking is down there. You have seen, okay. And in your experiences in the parking area, you see consistent parking there.
There's parking usage on the street.
Yeah, and, and not just usage, but like throughout the day. If, if, if somebody leaves because they, uh, it gets filled in within minutes. And did you see it ever?
We didn't do any detail on parking. I had been through there in the day. Middle of the day, afternoon, even as late as almost ten eleven midnight.
And I don't. I don't believe there's any time constraints for on street parking down. If anybody in this commission correct me if I'm wrong, as far as have to leave in the nighttime or the daytime, certain time periods. I don't know that because I, I'll have to go down there and look myself.
My recollection. Getting into that, during the daytime, there remains a two hour.
During the two hours. But, but that's for a person, though. I mean, once you leave, somebody can come in and fill up. And, yeah, and that's my point is that normally it's filled, not by one single car every day. Uh, for the whole day, but it's normally used consistently throughout the day and night. And that's your experience when you've been down there?
Throughout the day. That's my personal experience.
And if you have, uh. You have a, you have an application here where you're going to need parking outside of the project. Right? I mean, you've seen that outside of the. Yeah. You expect that parking to be right next to the building?
No.
Where do you expect that? Well, obviously, the.
Obviously, people want to walk parked as close to.
Of course, and if they have the ability to stay there all night. I suspect when they get home. Traveling from work, they're going to park as close as possible. Back sideline.
If some people have. But in the morning, if they don't move their car after seven o'clock. By nine o'clock. They're. You know. Possibly getting a ticket.
So, of course, but we, we've been told that ten percent of the. We have less than one parking car per unit, about nearly ten percent reduction, and it's going to have to be off site somewhere. So.
From the regulation language.
But in your professional opinion, though, even with the restriction of the two hours. If the parking on the street is consistently used so that there really is no. Uh, spaces available. More than five minutes, more than ten minutes, but consistently used, it's your opinion that. Those cars should be considered movable objects and not considered in the sight line.
Yes, because we follow the DOT's guidance in this case. But I want to just bring you to that.
Just to put one more button on it, I apologize. The DOT, in your mind, in your testimony, is there's no exceptions to that. It's, if it's on street parking, they're considered immo-, uh, they're considered movable objects without exception. I'm sorry, whatever the proper term is, I apologize, but it's considered, not considered an obstruction that would affect line of sight distances. For calculations.
Yes, we're trying to be fine with the exact language.
And we don't, if you don't see it immediately, we can come back to it, but.
Okay, it's time to be specific to the record on page eleven dash two. Chapter eleven dash two, point four E. Of the Connecticut DOT. It's highly designed, we can do all. And it's basically a design exception, which is. Design exception is not required where the minimum ISD is not met due to the parked vehicles within the roadway. That's it, that's the. There's a design exception in relief from the.
What was that again? Eleven point dash two point four sub E?
Yes.
Can we have that submitted to the record?
So I interrupted with the stopping SSD.
Okay, so we're still on sideline. Yes, SSD is what we're all looking at. Which is important in a downtown environment. Where we have situations such as this. Which I know is, it's not, this is not the only driveway that has parking. There are existing driveways on the street. Which is typical for a downtown environment. So the other thing we look at in addition to ISD is stopping site distance. At SE. Which is a case where if there is a car approaching, traveling on Sanford Street, can that driver of that car? You're seeing enough distance. Say if another car is already about to or in the process of rather. Exiting the driveway, can that driver approaching on Sanford Street see what's going on, slow down and stop? If necessary. And the SSD guidelines, which are different than the ISD guidelines, we looked at those. Those are also meant in this case. Those are also meant.
Okay, can you just go through how those calculate it? Um, what position cars in for SSD and all that stuff, like we did for ISD?
Yeah, we don't have, well, actually, we do have a graph. Hundred fifty five foot stopping site. Which corresponds with. The, again, the travel speeds on the road. Again, a lot of the components of the speed of the cars. We have to show them. Where is on Sanford Street? We're following the speed of the, where you're driving to have a left.
For the, I'm looking at the graphic and I see the points for red and green up there. They don't, am I, they don't line up with where you're exiting, correct? Kind of where the point of focus looking out is?
Well, we shift to the west driveway on this graphic for some reason, but nonetheless, the key.
Do you want me to go back to the other one?
Yes, let's go back to the other one.
There's two, there's, there's eastern. Okay, so you have two exits, two exiting driveways?
So on the lower left, in the middle of the road, you see it's a pileup for a hundred fifty foot stopping site. Which is the DOT's guidelines for car traveling twenty five miles per hour south, southbound on Sanford Street. They see another car exiting the driveway, can they stop safely? And they do, they meet the guidelines. Sanford Street is flat, straight, and the streets are as well. So they need the stopping site distance guideline. Which is, which is critical. Which we meet.
And now you have, and then on the other side, coming from Post Road, the standard is a hundred and sixty feet. Now, that's ISD. Do you have one going, an SSD coming from Post Road?
We don't have a graphic showing that in front of you. But again, I'd like to note that. Cars coming from Route One, not just Sanford Street. They have a low, even lower stopping site. Because they're, they physically, physically make a turn.
What did you do to the calculation? Did you do the calculation for the SSD coming off of Post Road?
One sixty is for ISD, but essentially the. I mean, yeah, so the one sixty feet, although it says ISD, it essentially doubles this. If you can picture a car just about to turn onto Sanford Street. At that point, they're looking north along that dash line. And they can see if a car is in the process, ahead of them is in the process of. Exiting the driveway, or even. Safety, I mean, they do meet the guidelines for both directions.
And for the car exiting, they would already be in the travelway. Or the.
In that scenario?
Yeah.
Then those are their car, where their life be? Yes, in the travelway.
That's my next, well, I want to make sure of that because with your calculations, I want to again understand if you're. Using SSD calculations that go through parked cars.
No, the SSD calculations are essentially along the dash lines, through the middle of the road where no cars are. Yeah, it's within the travel.
Okay. Any other questions from the commission, Commissioner Raymond?
Yeah, you mentioned that, uh, you consider the presence of parked cars when you're, uh. In ISD intersection stopping, uh, or intersection site distance. Uh, in terms of how far the driver or the driver's eye is, uh, from the travelway. Uh, could you, uh, explain that a little bit more?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I mean, even on this graphic, so. When we go back to looking at the ISD or the sight distance. Associated with motorists exiting the driveway. The ten, the fifteen feet back is from the travelway, which is essentially starting at this point, going back fifteen feet to right out here. That's the, that's the criteria. Which in this case is actually on the. UG, which we can take into account the travelway. Which in travelways between here, we offset or set back that fifteen feet from the travelway. If over, offset from here to here.
If there weren't, so if there weren't parked cars, the travelway would be closer to the building, right?
No, because nobody should be driving. The parking.
Well, uh, if there were no, if there were no parking permitted, right? So you're saying the presence, the presence of, of parking, uh, area, or even the shoulder. Moves, uh, the travelway further. Further down for the purposes of this exhibit. Therefore, it moves the driver's eye further down. Uh, so you're considering the presence of parked cars in terms of where the driver's eye is located, right? But you're not considering parked cars in terms of, uh, being able to achieve the required intersection site distance. When looking through parked cars.
We would not have to be mentioning this basis, is following the criteria. But, which that also brings back to the point of why we also get stopping site distance.
But that's a paradox, right? In other words, the parked car is, you know, there for purposes of where the driver's eye is located. But the parked car or a lane for the parked cars. Uh, is not considered when you're actually calculating when you have the ISD. Attention there and, and you can, you can say it's in the DOT manual itself, but aren't those two concepts in tension?
I will admit that, which is why we look at stopping.
Okay, and then just to clarify one statement in your report, so you said in your report. Uh, on street parking may sometimes come into play in terms of ISD. on-street parking may sometimes come into play in terms of I S Ds for motorists exiting the site. Excuse me, and while on-street parking may sometimes come into play in terms of I S Ds for motorists exiting the site, S S Ds are not affected by on-street parking on straight streets such as this one. So isn't it the case that you're looking at S S D stopping sight distance because there is an issue with looking through essentially permanently parked cars during the day with respect to I S D?
Whether or not it makes a difference in report, we look at stopping sight distance. That's really when you're looking at driveways, that's the minimum, the bare minimum criteria, so we all.
And stopping sight distance looks at the driver within the travelway and whether that driver can see another motorist coming out of the driveway, the building.
Can you just repeat your prior story?
Yes, yeah.
Commissioner Broad.
Just to ask a con review from the first application, this is true, maybe you can help me understand this. The, the concern was then, as it is now, accidenting from the building and worried about pedestrian safety. And I don't know if that was fixed in the new design, maybe you can explain it, it says, the building isn't closed and may block the view when looking to the left, which is south. The front of the vehicle would have to cross over the sidewalk before an operator has a clear view of the sidewalk area. They also wanted to have a cross-section, a cross-section of the ramp that includes both lanes of Sanford Street, as well as the bottom of the ramp and concrete walls, and vehicles must turn ninety degrees to avoid. Do any of those facts apply to the new design, and if so, how do we deal with these comments?
The first point is, in this application, you kind of wall things.
So you don't have a solid wall at the end, is there, is that showing up in one of the plans?
Our contention, like, I thought there was, I believe there is.
Okay, I don't want to take up too much time now with that, but that's just the point I wanted to make. And I'm looking at the Connecticut Department of Transportation manual, it's really a design guide, it's, it's not a mandate for us. We, if we decide, even if our own engineering department lets you, if this is decided, we think this site is unsafe based on the inherent and the actual use of that road by cars. Information, we, look here, we know what goes on there, we know there's a train station nearby, there's restaurants nearby, there's people going to school all hours of the morning and commuting all hours of the morning. You know what the parking patterns are in the Jordan, if we, if we, we think it's not safe on sight line or parking or anything else, is it your contention that we're not allowed to consider the local unique characteristics? Or do we have to go by this design manual of the D O T? Maybe that's part of the legal question, but.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Commissioner Broad, you know.
I don't know, you can tell me.
And in this, I think that's, you're asking, Mr. Olinsky, or.
It says we have to follow the design angle, it's a guidance.
I would respectfully suggest that, to the standard that your town engineer uses advising this commission, she said in the beach, that email would put her ear very clear, that's the standard that's utilized, advising this commission in designing, setting law on driveways now, and it's the D O T standard, and you don't count, they were fully, could not have been any more clear, I think it resonated with court feature appeal, that that's the standard that's used, and he asked, is there another standard that applies?
So if we feel it's unsafe, we would still have to approve it by following that standard?
If, if there are guidelines that, that, if there are standards that are utilized by the state of Connecticut in designing an entrance onto a street, you can go ahead and, you can do whatever you're gonna do, but the court is gonna rely on that standard, just as when you're from Joe or State with fire safety, if it complies with the codes. And if your own case here, garden homes, that's what the public court said, applies with the codes, that's it. Unless there's something we're just missing, but you can disagree with the standards, you can disagree with the code that applied, it's a physical law.
I, I do believe it's important to consider actual on-the-ground characteristics that could be lost with all these countrywide statistics that are compiled for traffic and parking and things like that. And if this is just a guideline, I don't see how that should supersede an actual unsafe condition, but if that's a legal argument, so.
It's actually, it's the standard utilized by the state and utilized by your town. You may disagree with it, I understand that, I understand you have other concerns, and that's.
Well, I think it's about pedestrian safety, and that's actually focused on a little bit at the end of this, that you have four or five different things in here that you're recommending in your traffic report to help protect pedestrians, because apparently it's not safe if you don't do about five different things, like have a voice system where it tells somebody that there's a car that might be coming out and having a sign saying a pedestrian might be walking by down the sidewalk. Towards the tail end of your report, there's a number of things that you have in here, because obviously, this report is very concerned with pedestrian safety. And that is a highly pedestrian-utilized area now, so that's, that's a little bit of a concern also.
Well, I think you're always getting, I know, with this kind of thing, that's, those are recommendations that you mean the town or the state wants to go and go ahead to do that. It's not your opinion, well, is it your opinion that those are required to make this safe use, or has it's proposed? In your opinion, is that the result, and it's just efforts in that, this is a public interest? We put out, we put forth, often put forth several recommendations, not every single recommendation has to be met. Or you move it into a project, but we put forth, in this case, few, most of them should be considered, and they are, and they are, some of them are. And to get back to the first point, the, the I S D and the stopping sight distance guidelines, they are and were applied to local conditions, and actual travel data that we did collect, localized in front of the site here in the case. Well, they are, the travel, the travel speeds, they are what they are, and they're, and undoubtedly, were cars parked there. And you do want cars parked in downtown, so to quantify, but on-street parking, it actually is a traffic calming, so that's a good thing, yeah. Probably helps people speed up and load the speedway. So while on-street parking can come into play when looking at I S D, on-street parking has a lot of benefits in and of itself that can kind of balance out things, you know, and it can act as, on-street parking can act as traffic calming to offer between the traveling vehicles on the street and the sidewalk, and quite frankly, the on-street parking. You have to weigh all those things. And the, the I T E and the stopping sight distance criteria, again, a lot of this conduct stuff is based off of vehicles. So we looked further, and that's why we made the recommendation to also look at pedestrians taking into this downtown, thus the recommendation for the mall as well.
I know we have a lot, but before we get to more questions, I see we're approaching our curfew at ten o'clock, so I just wanted to make some announcements of like, we will not be finishing tonight. The applicant will, the next app, the next one is July twenty-sixth, is where our continued hearing will be. The applicant will continue and finalize his presentation. I understand, I think you talked, Attorney Smith, you talked to Mr. Webb, he was providing, that lead extensions that we need for, where, where are we with that? Because I think we need to have to worry about extensions at this point when we start.
I, I'm just looking at the calendar, and I'll give you that answer from here briefly.
If we're okay, that's fine, but I just consider it an important thing. Okay, fifty-five, thirty-five, close.
We would require, yeah, we would require a contention of the thirty-five day period to complete the hearing once it's started.
Okay.
To get to the twenty-sixth.
Under eight seven, we can, we can send to the additional time to take us through the twenty-seven.
Thank you, so, thank you very much, appreciate your participation and consideration, as we keep going forward, this is a very, very important application. But to the public, this will be continued to the twenty, what did I say, twenty-second? Thank you, the application, the applicant will finish his presentation, then public comment will start and resume at that point. And depending on where we are, but after public comments, the applicant gets a rebuttal. That would end the hearing at that point, but we're not at that position yet. It is nine fifty-five now, should we get a few more questions?
I do have a lot of questions, if you have any.
Sure, I need, before we, any other, any other housekeeping matters that we need to discuss?
Yeah, we, the hearing director will begin this room, don't lie later.
Yes, and if there should be, should there be a change, we will provide whatever notice, not just to the public, but to you. Good question, yeah. Um, Mr. Webb, anything else on your end?
No, sir.
Okay, so Commissioner Harrison.
Yeah, thank you, thank, thank you for answering the questions. I just wanted to circle back to the I T E, the trip generational, trip generation manual. What year are the, is that data, those data sets from? Because what I read, they're, they fill from nineteen eighty to two thousand seventeen, and I'm curious if that's right or wrong, but because, you know, we've seen a lot of increase of this type of development around train stations, and that's kind of past that two thousand seventeen point, so I'm just curious where that's.
I did use the latest edition of the trip generation.
Right, into the eleven?
Yes.
Okay, is it possible to find out years that they track, eleven?
I'll have to check.
Thank you. Almost out for now.
Commissioner Ford.
Quickly, Mr. Olinsky, the, the cutouts on the north side of the building, south side of the building, that is, that is mainly for pedestrians, not the cars. I know you didn't design the building, but can you comment as to the purpose of the cutouts?
It's primarily for pedestrians, not only for pedestrians that need exiting cars, but also cars, motorists, drivers.
So the driver leaving the building can see pedestrians and upcoming cars?
That's the purpose of the wall, please.
Okay, thank you.
How high are the wall cutouts?
I don't have it.
Let's do that next time. We'll end at this point, we will, the application remains open on hearing tonight, we're at our, review is closed tonight. The application will be open as I said. Thank you, thank you everyone, thank you for your patience.